Change of zone map in site plan fourteen twenty six applicant Patrick Johnson. Location nine fifty seventy East Main Street. Proposal change zone map to AM overlay currently LB local business. Adult use cannabis retail establishment. Time of the hearing needed to call in closer first public hearing, which was to begin at seven PM. Comments of the above mentioned proposals are on file in the land use office city hall on forty each year twenty Connecticut. Great meeting with Chairman, my name is only commission data in Torrington, Connecticut, this second day of November twenty twenty two.
Is the applicant attendance? Please state your address for the record.
My name is Patrick Johnson. Twenty nine half a road across the.
Was the sign posted for the time allotted in our regulations?
Yes, sir.
And were the green cards sent out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Do you have my phone?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Good evening, for the record, Galen Seprabon, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Working for East West Engineering as a senior project manager here with the applicant. Basically. The site itself was located at nine fifty seventy East Main Street. For those of you who aren't familiar, it's presently being used as a bus garage. There's a building that was built around nineteen sixty four and the majority of the site or pretty much the entire site is presently paved around the building. The building itself is thirty six by ninety feet, single story building. The product or site itself actually consists of three parcels. There's two parcels that are part of of the nine fifty seventy's Main Street. And then a portion of the third parcel with ninety two Yorkshire has a pavement on it. Presently as part of the parking lot for the for the site. We are requesting a zone change and the site plan approval. The zone change would be to apply the overlay zone. Well, the site itself is zone LB limited business and we're looking to to. Put in the the overlay AM zone, the alternate incarceration, kind of medical marijuana dispensary zone. As an overlay zone on the two parcels that comprise nine fifty seven. East Main Street and then a portion of the property for ninety two Yorkshire. We are creating an easement on the ninety two Yorkshire. It's all three parcels are presently under the same ownership. So we are creating an easement on the ninety two Yorkshire property to allow the continuation of the pavement. That's presently there. The part of the zone change, we did prepare a narrative that discussed how the zone. The the use corresponds with your plan of conservation and development in particular. We are maybe a commercials, commercial strip quarter in that area. We are looking to to redevelop an existing use that's that's. You had seen the use that certainly could use some, the the site could use some dressing up. So I I won't go into details on the on the narrative unless you have some specific questions in regards to to the narrative. I would like to talk about, there's a couple of minor things in the narrative I would like to to point out. We did talk about amongst other things. Hours of operation, we'd be looking for hours of operation to be from nine AM to eight PM Monday through Saturday. And ten AM to five PM on Sunday. And then we did talk also in the narrative about the amount of traffic we expect or number of customers we expect at the facility. At approximately two hundred and fifty customers a day and that's based on past experience. Their client or or the applicant has with the similar facilities and similar locations. As part of the site itself, we are looking to make a number of improvements on the site. Basically, the site would continue to have twenty three parking spaces and one handicap space. We are looking to create a dumpster pad and generator enclosure basically for can close both the dumpster and the generator. We are looking to remove some landscape or some pavement. Presently, the site is paved on the back side along Yorkshire. It's paved right up to the road and the curb cut extends basically a full width of the property. So we are looking to close that that up to a a normal driveway width. And put in some landscaping trees and shrubs. We are also looking to create a shrubbery border between the site and ninety two Yorkshire. The existing house, even though it's owned by the same owner. Well, this is for certainly for the future should, you know, that house be sold or. You know, also obviously to augment the 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 visibility in the house provides more break between the two uses. Along the East Main Street, we are looking also to remove pavement. Presently, the pavement extends from the front of the building out to the the curb line. And we're looking to remove pavement and put in a landscape tree and shrubbery in that area also. To to dress up the site and make it more presentable. Town staff has had a number of comments on on the project that we've worked to address. They have some concerns with the drainage, how it worked out onto presently the site basically drains towards Yorkshire. And and out onto the street. So we are proposing to put in a catch basin within our parking lot along the back curb line. And then pipe it into the town system so that the water will no longer run onto the street. As part of proposed improvements, we are also looking to make the the access on the Yorkshire one direction. Putting up do not enter signs and you can see there's kind of a angle to the curb line to to so that anybody. Yorkshire would be used only as an exit from the site. So that vehicles could access the the traffic signal on East Main Street. East Main Street is a busy road through that location, so at some periods of the day, it would be difficult to take a left out of the site. Based on the location of the site, if you take a right out of the site, you're coming back down East Main Street towards Route Eight. And towards the center of town, so we expect the majority of the traffic to actually be taking the right out on East Main Street from the site. But for those vehicles that would be heading left out on East Main Street. They have the option of either waiting for a break in the traffic or exiting the rear driveway and entering via the traffic signal. At at the next intersection. Like I said, we've we've worked to address the the town comments. We've worked through the the majority of the engineering comments, I believe, and and planning comments. From the point of view of of the development of the site, there are some outstanding comments. But the but most of those have would be addressed after this commission acts such as the WPCA where we need to to obtain a a sewer discharge permit. We would need to reapproach the DOT. We are showing improvements along East Main Street, including the sidewalk. That would be inconsistent with the previous, we approved DOT improvements along East Main Street. However, because we're realigning our driveway slightly, you can see we're sweeping the traffic away from the front of the building a little bit. That the the staff has recommended or concluded, we should go back to the DOT just to approve that little piece. But the other improvements are the the width of the sidewalk, the the location of the sidewalks. In the same location as the previously approved DOT improvements for East Main Street. So they would couple up with the improvements being done by the by the city. We also will obviously address the building department's comments as part of a building and if any building permits necessary, permits necessary with the building department. That's kind of a a brief presentation. I'd certainly be happy to go into any more detail or if you have any questions on anything in particular that you'd like me to discuss in more detail.
And touch upon the the easement component. Again, the easement that you're talking about, you're saying there's multiple parcels?
Yeah. This property, there's a property line through here, so this is one parcel. There's a property line presently going right through here. So this is the second parcel and then this is the ninety two Yorkshire parcel. So these two parcels are now as nine fifty seven Main Street and ninety two Yorkshire. The present pavement follows the existing pavement line and comes out to the to the property along here. So we'd be looking to remove a little bit of pavement, but create an easement right down here to allow this pavement to remain.
Where's East Main Street?
East Main Street is here.
So you're putting a new sidewalk? You're putting a new sidewalk?
Yes, on East Main Street, we'd be looking to put a sidewalk in and this is the same location as the the town's plans. For the the city's plans for the improvements on East Main Street. Removing the pavement between there, between here and ten feet into the property. And putting in landscaping and greenery here and here and then realigning our driveway.
The the entrance and exit that you're showing there is there's going to be a delineation between the way in and the way out.
Yes, there's a stop bar and then we brought a central line into the property. The pavement central line to to direct the vehicles coming in and coming out, so it's.
Did you consider a no left hand turn? Did you consider a no left hand turn coming out of East Main and force all the traffic to the signal?
I mean, we hadn't, we hadn't discussed that, the the staff hadn't discussed it. So we figured we'd give them the option that during low period times, vehicles could take the left during periods when traffic is more prohibitive. They would go out Yorkshire and as part of this, you can see we were forcing them to go to take a right out to Yorkshire with a sign here directing to the signal.
No, I think that's a good idea, it's just that when you're making a left hand turn, obviously crossing a a line of traffic. And you're also trying to blend into two two line lanes of traffic coming on. And generally, that's about a fifty mile an hour pace. It isn't speed limit, but that's pretty much what you see.
So I will, I will say, we did have that same conversation with Sergeant Baldus. And and there was some concern, there's definitely some concern there, but the trying to at least encourage traffic to use Yorkshire Street. And and go to the light, but they didn't want to just make it right turn only onto East Main.
Okay, so back to the, I'm still confused, I apologize. The property, there's two separate pieces from back.
Yep.
Right now, yep.
So this piece. So part of the building is in the other parcel?
Yes, these two parcels, the building extends over that property line presently.
So why aren't you just combining those pieces?
That's one of the conditions of approval is for us to combine these two parcels.
So you wouldn't need the easement? You wouldn't need the easement for that component, correct?
If the the easement would be, this would still be the property line for ninety two Yorkshire, but we'd have the easement for the use of this payment for these nine fifty seven.
It's actually three parcels right now, so only two of them will be combined.
The top seven, top right seven parts as possible, the part of easement of the Yorkshire.
One and this one would be combined.
Jeremy, that easement would go with the land records?
Yes, it would, and that's that's a condition of approval that they combine the two of the parcels and record that that lot combination and record the easement. To to that York, what is it ninety two Yorkshire Street? Record that easement as well. So the 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 only reason why, I mean, not the only reason, but that the fact that makes that a little more acceptable is there's already pavement there. So they're they're essentially improving and reusing. You know, a a preexisting condition, but I I think it was important for us to get an actual legal easement for that, you know, on file for that parcel.
What's the suburbious surface looking like on that site? It looks like it's all paved.
Yes, yes, right now it is all paved and we're introducing, as you can see. Both sides of of on Yorkshire Street and on Eastern.
At present. At present, the impervious area ratio is point nine one two. We're reducing it to to point eight one six. So we're we're basically making it or decreasing the the existing amount before.
And you wish to send me the documents. Yeah, the Ross is own the property now, I guess the three parcels, are you buying the property? Or are you doing the land lease?
We're doing, we're releasing it.
You're leasing?
Yeah.
Okay, so the Ross is are going to go through the process of putting all three parcels together?
Yes.
And doing all that?
Yeah, those are conversations we've started already.
The parking spaces that are in the easement. Can the, was it ninety two or whatever Yorkshire, that house there? Can they use those parking spaces for if they rent that house out, can those people use those parking spaces?
Two of those parking spots.
Just two of them?
Two of them, yes.
And will those be monitored? On which two?
It 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 was not going to be designated, but they have access to it and that's something we we were, it's not.
Is it, is it because you need those parking spaces for the amount of people that are coming to your facility?
We would prefer to have those spots, they don't need them right now, but this is for the future. It is worth noting too that as of today, we work with the former Hertz parking lot, two hundred feet uh feet down the road. And we're gonna picking picking up eight parking spots there to borrow employees.
Going back to Yorkshire, is that a residential? So we're taking commercial traffic and throwing it into a residential road?
Not much, actually.
Well, you're forcing me up to the to the signal, which is. Well, the question is, we are doing that, whether it's one car or twenty cars.
Well, it's there now.
No, I understand about this thing, just, so you're saying you're having. The employees parking different lot.
That is the plan, some of them, not all of them.
And how are they shuttling up to the facility?
It's it's two hundred and fifty feet off the site, yeah, so it's it's very free, so things we've built to.
My little concern entities like that, you know, coming out of the gate, it sounds like you don't have no parking for your facility. You know, we've run into this in the past where, you know, people are going to get shoved from point A to point B to get to work and so forth. Now, do you have an agreement with this other place to have their?
Yeah, we signed it today, a seven year agreement.
Seven year agreement, so what happens?
We can accept, that's just the initial agreement, seven years, at least seven years, so.
And how many parking spaces?
Eight.
Eight? And that satisfies all of your employees?
It it would be, I think we'll have like ten employees on site, so we'll have to kind of take enough, I don't know if you want to talk about the parking calculations, but per the calculations, we have. We have sufficient as is, so this is kind of an extra. Extra benefit to have the majority of our employees, you know, park kind of.
You have sufficient parking for the customers or for the employees?
I think per the calculation, we have both.
Oh, yeah.
For the regulation. Yeah, per the regulations, sorry, yeah.
So you already entered into this agreement, you said?
As of today, yes, for the for that extra parking.
Sign, seal, delivery.
Sign, seal, delivery.
Of local insurance.
Well, sorry, it's LLI, so it is contingent on some of the board with this, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I know, it's obviously, we weren't gonna sign until unless we got approval on this.
And the Hertz parking lot is across the street from us?
No, it's just down the street, right before, I don't have the exact, I'm guessing it's about nine twenty Main Street, it's right before Benari's Martin Mark Center. So it's.
Same same side of the street.
Same side of the street, I I got it, yeah.
I think they use it for littering, in some cars.
Yeah, potentially, yeah, but it's it's a it's a fairly small kind of compact lot, I think I measured eight parking spots there.
With the the additional parking on the house lot. You mean all setbacks for the house, you're not encroaching like those parking spaces are going into the side yard where the house is too close to that parking?
This is all existing, so this whole, the gray area right here, this is all paved currently. We just want to make sure that we can continue using those, that area for parking.
Okay, is that house the residential zone right now or is that a?
It's it's in local business.
Sorry, I go, commission seventy comments, Starley, you're all set for now?
I I've got one, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Donovan.
How are you?
I was attending the meeting also this evening.
Thanks, so the the additional employee parking is the is the at the Hertz site? I couldn't.
Yeah, that's official, that's what, that's what our broker, that's that lies at the former Hertz site, I don't know if it has four ladders, but I have it between at the right, you know. I'm guessing nine twenty Main Street, but it's, I measured it was nine hundred and forty from that lot to our lot, so, sorry, not the two hundred and forty.
Same side of the street?
Same side of the street, just, you know, two hundred and fifty feet towards downtown.
So you've got, is is there existing sidewalk there now or are you gonna have your employees walking along the the grassway there or?
There isn't an, there isn't an existing sidewalk, but there is one proposed or. Basically, the construction contracts that are put out, I believe, by the city to to construct the sidewalks all along East Main Street. We're basically expecting to be opening earlier than the sidewalk is completed, so we would be looking to do the the sidewalk improvements. The front of our property prior to that, but it would be, I suspect, fairly closely thereafter.
Okay, thank you.
And and I could just, I could just add, we didn't, you know, and obviously in our review, we didn't factor in the offsite parking, we're only reviewing what, you know, what's on the site.
So with the two parking spaces that go for rental on that house, we still meet the requirements?
Yeah, well, we we are more than more than sufficient to meet the requirements even without.
Just as an aside, there is parking or small driveway for the ninety two Yorkshire that's separate from from our property or from our our parking lot. Where they also park presently, but it's it's fairly limited for, it's only probably one or one and a half cars in size.
Jeremy, do you have your memo, please?
Yes, yep.
Sorry, one sec, go ahead.
I have one more question, so. If there isn't, you know, a lot of traffic going onto Yorkshire, is there no parking on one side of that street? Everybody know that, on Yorkshire? I'm just envisioning customers parking on that street.
I'm not sure, I've never noticed a lot of parking on that street, but I haven't been really looking either.
Traffic, then look at that, Jer.
Oh, you mean if if there was, did they comment on that? No. No, I I mean, I don't know if you looked at it, but there was, there was nothing to to that effect in the comments.
Go Jeremy.
Okay, Patrick Johnson has filed an application for three adjacent properties, nine fifty seven East Main Street, tax assessor map one thirty three. Block zero one two, lot zero zero seven, tax assessor map one three three, block zero one two, lot zero one five. And a portion of ninety two Yorkshire Street, tax assessor map one three three, block zero one two, lot zero one nine. To request the following approvals, one, to adopt the alternate incarceration cannabis dispensary overlay zone on two of the properties. On two of the properties and a portion of ninety two Yorkshire Street. Two, to change the use from the current bus parking and office use to an adult use cannabis retail establishment. And three, site improvements to modify parking, landscaping signage, and to add a sidewalk along East Main Street. The properties are owned by James, Robert, and Richard Ross, are combined twenty two thousand six hundred and fifty one square feet, zero point five two acres in total area. And are all located in the LB local business zone. A previous site plan approval under application number eight two two was approved in January two thousand and seven to change the property use to a bus station and has expired. The proposed adult use cannabis retail establishment is a conforming use in the LB zone. With the adoption of an AM overlay zone under zoning regulations section three point one, table of permitted uses subsection twenty two point zero three. And section four point one six, alternate incarceration cannabis dispensary overlay zone, AM zone. A zone change hearing and a new and a new site plan approval approval are required for this proposed project. An A two quality property survey has been submitted titled, Property Survey Prepared for the Collective nine fifty seven East Main Street. By Close Jansen and Miller PC Consulting Engineers, Land Planners and Surveyors, Weathersfield, Connecticut. Dated September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, one sheet. A plan set including a zone change map, site plan and grading plan has been submitted titled, The Collective nine fifty seven East Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. By East West Engineering, West Hartford, Connecticut, dated October eighteen, twenty twenty two, five sheets. The contents of the zone change and A two survey sheets meet the basic requirements for a zone change application. Staff has met previously with the property owner and engineer to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note. One, no significant changes to the exterior of the existing building are proposed. Two, details on the proposed freestanding sign are missing. A full final design of the sign is not required, but the applicant should provide basic details. On the proposed sign in accordance with section eight point four point three point L of the regulations. Specifically proposed lighting, sign colors, general dimensions, and height. Freestanding signs shall be limited to no more than five feet in height and twenty square feet in accordance with the regulations. Three, property boundaries between nine fifty seven East Main Street and the adjacent parcel to the north. Currently bisect the existing building and should be combined as a condition of approval. Four, some parking for the business is currently located on the property that is a residential use at ninety two Yorkshire Street. Limited screening should be proposed for the residential use. And an easement provided for the area used for the business related parking on the ninety two Yorkshire Street property. Five, according to the notes on the submitted zone change map sheet ZC dash one. There are no parks, playgrounds, schools, recreational facilities, childcare centers, or libraries within five hundred feet of the subject properties. Six, the nearest approved adult use cannabis retail facility facility in the city is approximately five miles away from this property on Winston Road. Seven, in my opinion, the proposed use, location, and site design is compatible with the neighborhood and surrounding uses. Other staff comments, economic development, Rista Malakas, City of Torrington Economic Development Director. Um, other staff comments, economic development, Rista Malaka, City of Torington Economic Development Director. Rista Malaka, A I C P, Torington Economic Development Director verbally indicated her support for the zone change and site plan application. After discussion on potential, potential distribution of adult use cannabis locations in the city. Wetlands Conservation, Landscaping, Lighting and Signage. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to me dated October thirty first, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments on the plans. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses in the vicinity of the subject property that require wetlands review for the proposal. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, the landscaping plan satisfies section five point one one of the zoning regulations. Based on the submitted plans, it is my understanding that plants C and D will be located at the same elevation as. Single-family residents and not at the parking lot level. Because these shrubs are short, they will not properly screen the residents unless they are planted above the parking lot elevation. I recommend using a native tree species as an alternative to the London plane tree. Good alternatives would include red maple, river birch, or white oak. Lighting, no lighting is shown on the site plan, new lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the city zoning code. Including, including the use of full cutoff fixtures, we encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, there are no new signage, per, signs proposed as part of this application. Assigned permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review and comment. Architectural Review Committee, no significant changes are proposed to the building exterior or the site that rise to the level of requiring A R C review. Torington Area Health District, T A H D, offered no comments on these plans. Engineering, Paul Cunson, City Engineer, in an email dated to me. Uh, in, emailed to me dated November first, twenty twenty-two, submitted marked up plans, sheets G R one and S P one. For correction by the applicant's engineer. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus, in an email to me dated November tenth, twenty twenty-two. Offered the following comments on these, on the plans. Changes look good, my only suggestion is to have the exit direct them east on Yorkshire to the signalized intersection. And put the bump out of the raised island on the west, one directing people up. The sign should have the arrow then facing right, less chance of angle crashes for people trying to make a left onto East Main Street again. Other than that, it looks good. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta, in an email to me dated November eighth, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments on the plans. The building should be equipped with a complete and compliant fire protection system compatible with the change of use. The fact it will be vacant during non-business hours make it a prime candidate for delayed discovery of a fire inside. Torington makes use of lock boxes to allow quick access by firefighters in time of an alarm without causing damage. If not already in existence, a lock box should be installed on the exterior of the building near the main door. The fire department will use its secure master key to open the box and allow the building owner to leave appropriate building access keys inside. This eliminates any delay in entering the building or waiting for a key holder to arrive in the middle of the night. The building and area must comply with all required lighting and electrical codes. And will be inspected by the, by the fire marshal for compliance with life safety code. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and annually thereafter. Uh, W P C A, Ray Drew, Public Works Director, in an email to me dated November third, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments. One, applicant shall submit for, shall, shouldn't sell, shall submit application for a sewer discharge permit. Two, additionally, additional information required, A. Weekly days of operation, B, number of full-time and part-time employees, C, number of clients expected daily. D, projected annual water consumption for the new facility. Three, capacity reserve fee shall be paid prior to the commencement of discharge. Fee will be determined upon receipt of items number one and two above. Four, owner shall certify that there are no discharges of stormwater. Either directly or indirectly into the sanitary sewer system from the building. Stormwater discharges shall comply with the City of Torington Department of Engineering standards. A, owner applicant shall contact W P C A to inspect building for compliance with chapter one seventy dash fourteen of Torington Code. B, contact James Hilton, eight six oh, four eight five, nine one six six, to schedule inspection. Five, applicant shall you, shall use best management practices to minimize the amount of fats, oil, and greases that are just discharged to the public sewer. Six, occupants shall use best management practices to minimize the use of phosphate containing cleaners, cleaners and detergents. Seven, submit copies of any federal or state permits related to wastewater discharges. Eight, for additional information or questions, contact W P C A, eight six oh, four eight five, nine one six six. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette, in an email to me dated November eighth, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments. Please provide the following information as it pertains when applying for required permits. Complete sets of I B C section one oh seven required construction documents as applicable. Prepared by a registered design professional for all work to be performed. Complete life safety plan with occupant load and occupancy classification. Complete plan for accessibility, including parking and passenger loading facilities. Complete exhaust and makeup air system plans, complete mechanical and electrical, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing plans. Subject to review and onsite correction, it shall be the duty of the permit holder or their agent to notify the building official that such work is ready for inspection. Conclusion, per responses and plan modifications. From the applicant's engineer on November seventh, twenty twenty-two, and further review by city staff. I recommend approval of site plan number fourteen twenty-six, nine fifty-seven East Main Street and adjacent parcel, parcels. Zone change and site plan change of use with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner. Outlined in his October thirty first, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Two, the applicant shall make plan corrections based on comments and plan markups from Paul Cunson's. City Engineer outlined in his November first, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Three, the applicant shall address traffic flow comments from Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus. In his November tenth, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Four, the applicant shall follow the recommendations of Fire Marshal Edward Becetta. In his November eighth, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner regarding lock boxes. Five, the applicant shall follow the comments of Ray Drew, Public Works Director, outlined in his. November third, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner regarding sewer discharge permitting. Six, the applicant shall follow the building permit requirements outlined by Building Official Kevin Gillette. And his November eighth, twenty twenty-two letter to the city planner. Seven, properties known as nine fifty-seven East Main Street, tax assessor map one thirty-three, block zero one two, lot zero zero seven. And tax assessor map, that one three three, block zero one two, lot zero one five. Shall be combined in the final plans to be filed, a copy of the filed updated deed shall be submitted showing the lot merger. Eight, an easement for parking on the ninety-two Yorkshire Street property in favor of nine fifty-seven East Main Street. Shall be shown on the final plans, a copy of the final updated deed for ninety-two Yorkshire Street. Shall be submitted for the application file describing the easement. Nine, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the proposed use, location, and site design. Is compatible with the neighborhood and surrounding uses and is protective of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the City of Torington. Ten, zoning permits are required prior to the alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Eleven, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of site plan sheet S P dash one for filing with the city clerk. In accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal, and a living stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after signature of the chairman and prior to approval of. Zoning permits to begin construction or site work. Um, and I also added, right at the end, the hours of operation shall be nine to eight, Monday through Saturday. And ten to five on Sunday.
Jer, just a quick uh, question, under your other items of note, number five, according to the notes of the. Uh, zone change map, there are no parks, playgrounds, et cetera.
Yep. I don't, I don't have the map in front of me, but can you, Nate, can you uh, scroll up to that?
About three hundred feet. It's about three hundred feet, it's right next to that parking lot. The Hertz parking lot right next door, if that's two fifty, it's only another fifty feet to the studio. If that.
So what's it happen to? One other question I have, uh, besides that, you can think about your distance there. Where's the front door on that building?
Right, right now, there's uh, three doors and three garage doors. Uh, we would keep the two doors on each side, left and right. Um, the one kind of towards East Main Street would be entrance, entrance, the one. Toward Yorkshire would be the exit, and then there's actually a small door on the side of the building, which would just be for deliveries, which would be used maybe three times a week.
Okay, um, I took the opportunity, uh, last couple of months. To take a drive, and I'm just asking you this question just to see how your operation works. Okay, I took the uh, opportunity to drive up to Great Barrington to the facility that was right over the skateboard. As when you walk in, uh, it basically, it's like, man, it's really regulated. I mean, they look at everything, you pretty much have to. Keep your kids away, to just to walk through the building, um. But they do let everybody in all at once. It was very, one at a time, make sure everything was fine. If you're talking two hundred and fifty people a day, what's that, twenty to thirty an hour?
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Okay, where, where would those people stand at that front entrance door? Because in Great Barrington, they have an area of like a corral or whatever, where people would be lined up at the front door.
So we do have a little bit of uh, queuing area on the left side where the people enter. But if you do the math, average waiting time is about six minutes per, sorry, the average in-out time, visiting time is about six minutes per. So even if you ratchet that up to four hundred people an hour, uh, sorry, four hundred people per day. It only comes out to concurrent four people at a time in the store, on average, on average.
Right, exactly, I totally agree with that because it's not normally crowded.
Yeah.
Should walk in, um.
Yeah, sorry, so just to elaborate, that there is, there is, once you get in, there's kind of holding.
Right.
Called that, so, so yeah, so whether, if weather doesn't, you know, if they don't want me outside, if we don't have that area, come inside, we can. We should be able to manage the volume that we expect fairly easily inside.
Okay, now are, are you gonna be doing, I, I know a lot of these delivery places like Nordash and places like that, they do home delivery, so you're gonna be doing that?
This is just a retail site, we are not allowed to deliver as part of our license. I know there's other licenses coming up in the state that's gonna allow for delivery.
Who eats does it in Nordash?
Yeah, I mean, so here it would be, it wouldn't be somebody like that, it would hit, the state is giving away a few, I don't know how many. Uh, delivery licenses, that's gonna come and be able to work with operators. Uh, to pick up the product of medical adult use and deliver to person at their home. That is something where we would explore, um, but per, we couldn't do it on our own. We don't have the license, this is just purely retail adult use only license.
Sound like picking up a peach that dropped in the hall.
No, no.
Any other commissioners, have any comments, questions?
I, I have a question. Jeremy, did we, when they did the um, traffic. Analysis, did they account for the increased volume of people who are outside of Torington?
So I did not review the traffic study, um, Sergeant Baldus did. Uh, and he didn't raise, he didn't raise any concerns uh, on that specifically. To, to me, or I, I assume to the applicant that I, that maybe I didn't see.
So I mean. I, I've seen a couple of, of these places and, and traffic usually, you know, is. Sometimes horrendous, that's why some of these locations are out in very like, open areas where, you know. People can pull in and have enough parking spaces. Um, you know, East Main Street is, is tough already as it is.
Right.
Um, and then Yorkshire is kind of like a neighborhood street. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about the amount of traffic that's gonna be coming in and out.
Hmm.
Um, cause we're not just talking about residents of Torington, we're talking about residents from neighboring areas who. Don't have close access to a retail location.
Yeah, and, and I, I do know that it would have been a lot tougher on this site had they not had a rear exit. Um, the, the one plus in it, and it, you know, it's almost, uh. I mean, it's not the same, but it's, but it's a good, a good comparison was our previous Starbucks approval. Having the ability to exit these sites and go out to a stoplight makes, makes traffic a whole lot safer, but. Again, the, the trade-off is the traffic has to, the, like, the, at least the opposite side of Yorkshire Street is residential, so. I mean, there, there is the, you know, sort of the trade-off in this neighborhood, you can get out to a light. But you do have to exit into a, at least half of a residential street to get out there.
I'm sure that over time, the customers, which will be repeating customers, obviously, will learn how to get out of that site and get onto that site. With the least amount of. Difficulty as possible, so I would expect at some point. That, uh, though that residential street would be used in both directions, probably down to Tioga. And Tioga would come out onto East Main Street, um, it has a different sight line. Uh, so it's, it's, you know, it's there, you're not gonna prevent it, it's, it's, it's gonna be utilized to whatever extent, uh, general public wants to use. Jerry, once. Loris, uh, according to uh, the internet, it looks like it's three hundred sixty-four point two feet away. From this facility. Which is loaded with kids and people of all ages.
Which, I'm sorry, I, I missed part of that, Greg.
You know, we're, we're looking at. The, the five hundred foot. Circle, so to speak, childcare centers, recreational facilities, and so forth, Loris Karate Studios within. Three hundred sixty-four point two feet of this facility.
Yeah, so we don't, then, we don't specifically define what a recreational facility is, but when, what we're thinking about that is, it's more of a, you know. Your, your baseball fields and your, um, you know. Uh, you're, I, I, I won't, I won't say just like municipal things, but, um. The karate studios fit under like, uh, like, I mean, at least the way we define, we, we've always defined it as it fits under like a gym. Um, even though it's for all, for all ages, including children, it's, it's like a more, more of a gym use that the way we've, we've defined it in the past. Um, you know, how we, how we define it for, for proximity, we, we just haven't. Gone, drilled down to a level of actually trying to define what a recreational facility is.
I mean, I relate that to almost being, you know, similar like at the end studio, you know, the, the class starts at five o'clock. Mom and pop are dropping their kids off.
Yes.
Maybe, you know, half an hour, an hour later, whatever the timeframe is of the, the class, everybody is. Discharged and let out.
Yeah.
Mister Carroll had a, a valid point that, that I'd like to touch upon again, you know, in light of the, the parking. Size and location of the, the facility, you know, my concern is people are gonna pull out of Yorkshire and start parking. If, if the parking is, is jammed up, and again. I frown on. Applications where there's off-street parking, right out of the gate, required to accommodate the facility as is.
At the corner of Yorkshire, there's also that other commercial building where our office used to be. And there's quite a few parking spots there, and I envision people parking and walking down as well, so. Yeah.
Could I interject for a minute?
Please, um, basically, our our concern is the same as yours. That we wanted to make sure there was as much parking on the site so that we wouldn't have that problem. If this was a typical retail use, your regulations would require nine parking spaces on this site. Knowing that we we have up to ten employees, that obviously doesn't make sense. So what we've done is that our original intent was to get as much parking, to keep as much parking on the site as possible so that we wouldn't ever have that problem. And then to ultra ensure that we've gone out and gotten eight more parking spaces for our employees. So that we aren't concerned that that would ever be a problem, because it's not good for for business if you don't have enough parking. Um, you know, the old adage that the supermarkets and Walmarts do where they want fifty percent of the under parking lot empty so that people driving by don't think the store's busy. It's not quite the same here, but we do not want a situation where people come here, can't find a parking space, and then don't come back. I mean, that's just not good for business. So we've gone out of our way to make sure we've got plenty of parking from from the point of view of our use. Uh, we have twenty-three parking spot or twenty-four, excuse me, parking spots, which includes the one handicap spot. And then we have eight more parking spots off-site.
Right, your your statement was that even if you brought the ten onsite, you still need to.
So we have.
I would say.
Well, here twenty parking spots.
Only require nine, then you're you're in good shape, even if you pulled every employee back.
I mean, we we certainly share your concern, and that's why we're, you know, if if the site didn't work for us, then we certainly wouldn't.
Do that, and you have an option, and you don't have to. You know, you had this more of a likelihood that people will find another place to park, that you just consume somewhere.
It is, it is worth noting too, that what we're typically trying to do, trying to work with the local police department, have kind of, uh, the police presence when we first opened, kind of helped manage to manage the kind of traffic flow. The town is allowed to charge us fifty thousand dollars to kind of do those things. And that's something we we typically offer up or or at least wanna do, and then we'll we'll kind of keep it going as long as we need until kind of everything kind of settles down. Cause there is that initial rush, maybe the first week or two, and then after that kind of thing, steady. And the way Connecticut's doing it too, which is unlike some of the things you saw in Massachusetts, is Massachusetts was kind of a rolling admission. And the process was was messy, to be honest. You know, here, the way Connecticut is doing is everybody's kind of getting ready for it. And when they do turn it on, it's gonna be i- i- in the kind of twenty, thirty, forty kind of store opening at once probably. So it's not, you're not gonna see the kind of the one or two stores that's gonna have three hours of 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 queue. That's not happening.
Maybe just clear my head here, you you're talking two hundred and fifty customers a day. What are ten people doing back there? In the facility?
Well, well, that's the thing, at the, so we're gonna be hiring dynamically, so typically, there's gonna be some peaks on Friday, Saturdays. We'll kind of have people ready to work then, and we're we're gonna staff accordingly, right? I think we we wanna make sure that we have people so that we can get people. So we wanna make sure we're oversat. So that when people come in, the the weight is minimal, and they kind of go in and out so they don't take out parking spots. That's, you know, that's.
So as Commissioner Bobinski, uh, questioned, how many people are standing at the counter at one time?
We have eight, we will have, we are set up for eight registers. Not all eight registers will be active any, at, you know, some days of the week, right? On some of the busier days, we'll probably have eight registers going. Maybe on Monday morning, we'll have three registers open, right? We're gonna kind of ma- man accordingly. But then you'll have people back at the house helping kind of fulfill the orders. We'll have somebody check in, kind of manager in sight, so it it does that out.
I even have the story that I have based on my experience, because I mean, that's just my business.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just just for clarification, I was the former regional president of Curaleaf, um, I managed twenty-eight stores. Uh, twelve hundred people, twelve hundred people in seven states. So I've opened plenty of these, uh, you know, we've always done it in a good way. I believe, uh, we've never had any major issues. We try to kind of work very proactively with with the local different departments to make sure that, you know, any any feedback we incorporate right away, uh, we can react to. Um, and it's worked fairly well in the past, and, you know, I encourage you if if if, you know, uh, the police chief wants to reach out to some of our, my other former operations in Massachusetts and how we work with police departments there. I, you know, encourage that. I'm sure it's gonna be nothing but positive feedback there.
So in your previous stores that you've managed, the the rush really is the first month thing? Like, it's almost like a
It's, it's, I mean, there's a slight in there.
Let people come to check it out?
Yeah, and it depends. Yes, it it, there is an, obviously, an initial kind of buzz.
Yep.
It does depend on the state by state basis how they do it, right? In Connecticut, I'm sorry, New Jersey, they turned on, I think when they first turned on, it was eight stores. And New Jersey's always quite a bit bigger than Connecticut, so there was lines because there's only eight stores available. I think the way Connecticut's doing it, because everybody's kind of getting ready now, and they're gonna allow the current operators to flip kind of overnight if they're ready as well. So there's gonna be quite a few stores, I believe, when the fi- when the program finally comes on. Hopefully, end of Q one, maybe sometime Q two, if I'm hearing. Um, you know, a lot of these operators will be ready, you know, ready to open the door. So you're gonna, you're gonna get, you know, it's gonna be spread out across all these different stores.
Okay. A much more increase in traffic. Not cars, meaning parking spaces, but traffic is generated by this use versus the present use.
I mean.
We're, and and the reason I'm asking this is because of residential streets. I really have a problem with all of that traffic going down the residential street, because I know I own a business, and I know when people don't have the parking, they're parking anywhere. And if it happens to be on a residential street in front of your house where there's a little kid playing, it doesn't matter because they're going where they wanna go.
Well, I mean, we're we're estimating two hundred and fifty, uh, visitors or two hundred and fifty patrons. So about five hundred vehicles a day, uh, divided by, if it's equally distributed, it's about fifty cars an hour. But top five hundred vehicle trips a day. Uh, the present use is a bus garage, bus yard. Um, I'm not, we did not do counts on the buses, and well, buses weren't there. Yeah, buses, I guess, were still a little less networked there, but we did not do counts on the buses. But at the present time, there is a chain across the entrance out to East Main Street. So all bus traffic from that facility has been using Yorkshire, is my understanding.
But how many buses park?
Uh, well, they're lined up on both sides, so the twenty to twenty-five buses, I don't know.
Fifteen here.
Fifteen?
Their number's fifteen, and I don't know how often in and out.
Out once, and then they come back and they sit there pretty much all day, and then they go back. Is that how that works?
They they usually go out for like morning route.
Right.
Come back, sometimes, sometimes they're gone all day. There's not, not a lot of.
Right, we'll get to a public in just a minute. Do any other commissioners have any comments or questions before we move on?
I have a quick one. Um, I'm just, I'm just interested, Jeremy, and and following up a little bit on the five hundred feet. What would you say is the, what was the purpose of the five hundred foot border in the first place? When you say it applies to, um, um, parks and and what was it basically to separate out children from uh, close proximity to a retail cannabis store?
Well, it was, it wasn't a hard separation distance. It was the ability for us to look at the factors, you know, so there there may be a factor where something is five hundred feet away, but there's a buffer of, say, a lot of stuff in between where we were or something's four hundred feet away, but it's fine. If it's, you know, something that we're concerned about is, it like, if there's a school three hundred feet away on a main road, there's a difference between maybe having a school that's, that's separated by a bunch of businesses, you know. Uh, I I mean, we didn't wanna set a hard separation, but we wanted to have the ability to weigh, to weigh those uses. Um, the only reason why I say definitions is is we were, we had a certain thought about recreational facilities. And like, uh, private, like, I I'll just admit, like, a private karate studio never came into the into the thought process when we were thinking, we were thinking like your your soccer fields and your, and your, um, your, your public basketball courts and your, you know, thing, you know, that kind of stuff.
So more, so so more around, um, the, maybe the unsupervised
Yeah.
Group of kids that, so, so, so this distingu- is distinguished by the fact that you may, you maybe have parents dropping off and picking up and right, right there. Okay, I understand, thank you.
So when we define it, when we define something like that, in in, like, if they were doing a change of use to a karate studio, it would be like the same as a gym. Regardless of what age people were, you know, using it, uh, and and we just didn't define it. So if it it is really an open question for the commission, but I I could just tell you what our thought was when we were, when we were putting it together for, you know, framing it out for the commission.
Appreciate that. That helps quite a bit. Thanks, Jeremy.
And, you know, there seems to be this sensitivity to the use of the residential street and parking and versing the traffic. And I would think there would be a remedy to that, and I think my first suggestion helps a little bit, which is saying, right turn only out of the back of that lot. And you can only go to the signal. You can't go left, you have to go right. And that takes a lot of, uh, that street out of luck, because there's there shouldn't be more on that road. It goes down towards Tioga Street, then it goes up towards the signal. And not only that, if you go up towards the signal, there's more businesses on that way. You have Riley's, you know, I forgot what the corner building is now, it keeps changing, but we're not even interested, you guys used to. So my point is that, you know, there's remedies to this if you're willing to do it. And as far as parking goes, you know, you know, tell traffic, I want you out there and I want you to put no parking space in. This is, we don't want any parking on that street. And, um, so I I don't, you know, I don't know how you feel about it, Jeremy, but I'm feeling like, um, we could probably um, lessen the sort of concern about the residential street by doing those couple of things. And basically what you're doing is you're forcing circulation out of the lot to go where it will have the least impact on the residential street.
And I I won't get in the Sergeant Baldus's head, but I think that was his thought too, to direct everybody in one direction.
That's just my. Yeah, but again, there's no way to regulate that somebody leaving the parking lot is in the turn right. You know, and that's even the aspect, you know, even if you change the the entrance and exit out of the the front of it on East Main, you know, no left turn, you know, people disregard that. I mean,
Yeah.
You know, without specific, uh, other businesses on East Main, you know, people disregard the signs all the time.
Yep.
I agree, I agree that, you know, in fact, I would, you know, I'm backing off on my request to consider a no left turn on East Main. I would give that up to have a right turn only out of the road block. So you can, you can move traffic. I mean, and go around from the mouth, then people, you're not gonna be able to. Just, you can't control it much, at least in there, but at least you could force issue by putting in the curb cut the way you want it. And we can say right turn only, and that's the way.
And I'm sorry, that, and that, that is what we did based on the feedback from the chief, right? We we kind of. Yeah, Yorkshire, right. Yeah, that, yeah, Yorkshire, yeah. So we had a little bump out on the, on the, on the curb cut here, and it's, it's gonna be a sign, right turn only. And we do have.
We did incorporate this based on, based on the sign of the chief, right? Yeah, so kind of hurt that way. And I mean, you could accentuate that even more.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have signage, and we'll kind of have it kind of.
So I could make it a real hard curve. I could. I can add anything up here. I don't know why it was like crazy.
Can I just touch upon a concern with, on the traffic on Yorkshire? Obviously, we didn't wanna necessarily restrict all the left turns to make them go out to Yorkshire because of the, obviously, the traffic on the road. Um, you you know, your your question on about the amount of traffic now on Yorkshire versus what we'd be putting on. We're we're looking at about five hundred vehicle trips a day. Uh, two hundred and fifty of those would be entering and two hundred and fifty exiting. All of the entering would be from East Main Street, because we've indicated no entrance from Yorkshire. Uh, now, realistically, the majority of the traffic centers is towards the Route Eight corridor and towards the 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 center of town. So the majority of the traffic we expect would be taking a right turn out of the site. So at the most, we'd have, even if it was a fifty-fifty split, it would be about a hundred and twenty uh, vehicles going out of Yorkshire. If there's fifteen buses now and they make two trips a day, and they're always exiting out of Yorkshire, uh, that's sixty vehicle trips, plus the vehicle trips for the vehicles coming with bus drivers to come to the buses to take them out, and then, so there's vehicles coming down Yorkshire, pulling in, parking, taking a bus, leaving, coming back with a bus, and then leaving with their vehicle. So that's about, if you figure fifteen buses, two trips a day, coming in and out, that's sixty trips for the buses and sixty trips for the peak, the drivers coming to and from the site twice a day. So it's approximately the same amount of traffic if you're looking at it realistically on Yorkshire. Realistically, we expect more, more of our vehicles to take a right turn out of, out of the site than a left turn. Um, so they wouldn't just be taking a right turn on the East Main Street directly. So that's just off the top of my head, looking at the fifteen buses that are there if they're making two trips a day.
Okay, well, one other question. The, uh, the travel with going out onto Yorkshire is how wide? That enters right there, you have your apron or whatever, to make that turn.
I mean, we've shown it at twenty-four feet.
Okay, twenty-four feet would be going in and out. How do we knock down to twelve feet? And get rid of that last space there, because it looks like that last space up towards Yorkshire, you're only widening that so that person has a way of turning to get, to do a three-point turn to get out onto Yorkshire. So why don't you lose that space, cut that down to twelve feet, and then you're really saying to people, you have to go to the right.
Instead of the twenty-four. Certainly, as you're at, we we expected the, you know, to to keep it twenty-four to a lot of dumpster trucks to make that maneuver.
Well, dumpster trucks coming in off of, like, East Main, he does his thing and he goes back out the way he wants.
I mean, if if it wasn't.
The easiest thing for a dumpster truck would be to come in, circle, come here, back out, and go out.
Right.
But you could certainly look at, at, they're making that down.
Right, that's what I just said. And then get rid of that other space, and that way, the the second space coming up has a way to do a three-point turn to go back out the twelve-foot lane. Because it tells me that if you only put that speed, that twenty-four.
That get down here, so you can do that, I say.
What I'm saying is get rid of this. This guy here goes like this, and he goes back out. This guy here, just bring this over to here. And make that tighter, right? That way, you're really showing us that it's a right turn. But now, anybody can do it if they want.
Yeah, I mean, the reality, no matter what you do, you know, I mean, you can try to force people to do stuff and direct them, but, you know.
I mean, I guess.
Certainly be be amenable to working on that.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly took an attempt at it, right? We we did narrow, we changed the flow, we're putting up signage. And if 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 we need to bump it out another four or five, whatever feet, yeah, we'll obviously do that, because that was the intent of this change. If you don't think this is enough, we'll kind of take it as a perfect, as a not a problem.
We're looking.
It's unfortunate that this site abuts a residential neighborhood. You know, you're introducing a whole broad spectrum of activity back there.
No, we understand. I mean, we we, I mean, we we looked kind of in a lot of different, we looked for months in in Torrington. I know we live downtown. I know that was a part of kind of where we're zoning, so this was a viable site, and I've worked with the town for for a bit now. And I think the general consensus was this was a good viable site, uh, and that's kind of how we kind of came to this point.
I don't think it's unworkable. I just think it needs to spend more time on the concern, which is, we wanna really we really wanna buffer residential part from the activity, so.
I mean.
The fact, the fact that you, the fact that you hadn't allowed in any turn-ins from the, from the residential street is a good thing. So that was a good movement in our direction. Uh, we're trying to say right now is, let's try to come up with a way that uh, really, you know. Uh, we're trying to say right now is, let's try to come up with a way that, uh, really, you know, makes it obvious to the people that you really can't go left, you have to go right. Out of the back of property, you want to go left? You want to not do that? Then fine, go out the other way. You have both ways to get in and out.
I mean, I think if that's a condition, it's true of us to tighten that and kind of have it be forty-five degrees onto that road. So you can't really make it, don't have to be a jackknife turn onto, you know, Yorkshire. We'll, we'll certainly. Convene with that.
Certainly could work with staff to, to, to meet your concerns.
Yeah.
Any other commissioners have any comments before I go to the public? Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Being, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Kimberly Grestis, and I am here on behalf of Pat and James Grestis. Owners of nine seventy-seven East Main Street with five apartments at Yorkshire Street. Um, my role is to give you comprehensive data on location selection and parking comparisons. For medical marijuana facilities owned by Cure Leaf. As well as similar recreational marijuana retail locations as proposed by Not Maybe Northwest, J B L L C. I will show you in his own words that Patrick Johnson knows quite well. Based on his experience with Cure Leaf, that this location is extremely unfit, undersized, and unsafe. For a recreational cannabis retail store. Um, we heard from, I'm sorry, Mr. Ovinski.
Yes.
That he has visited a recreational marijuana facility to observe, well, just to observe.
Yes, yes.
So maybe, um, as a show of hands, would anyone else like to tell me who else has that too facility? So I had never, um, and that is where I started my research. Um, I have handouts for everybody. May I?
Submitting this for the record?
Pardon?
You're submitting these for the record?
I'm submitting these for the record. I also have a PDF. I didn't know I could submit my classes.
Sure.
Thank you. No getting ahead of me. Um, I want to. These are, this is just an overview of the area from, uh, Tioga. Uh, to the, where the auto park store is. Um, I want to also let you know that the, uh, the following slides that I've compiled. Um, were obtained from the Cure Leaf website, Wheat House dot com, Google, the Connecticut Secretary of State. And Marijuana Business Daily Magazine. The first page, um, the first two pages I'm submitting are of the actual Cure Leaf facilities itself. I want to also indicate that Cure Leaf, the four, the four ones I've shown you are actually medical. They are not recreational marijuana facilities. The first one is at ninety-two Weston Street in Hartford. They have a hundred and thirty-two parking spots. Cure Leaf in Stamford, they have ninety-six parking spots. I also want to stop you on this first page, and I want to show you, I want you to recognize the locations that these are. Every facility I'm about to show you does not abut any residential location. In Connecticut, Massachusetts, and New Jersey. Go to the next page. The Cure Leaf in Milford, Connecticut has forty spots. Cure Leaf in Groton has twenty-five spots. But if you can see on that, it also abuts another parking lot. They have access, access to other parking. The next page, just for your viewing pleasure, is an actual shot of the Cure Leaf growing facility in Wheaton, Connecticut. I counted two hundred plus parking spots. Again, my notes were saying that these facilities are specifically medical marijuana. Their hours are not seven days a week. They have reduced hours, and most of them are not open on Sundays. Based on the research and reports from the recreational marijuana industry. Recreational facilities see an average of four hundred to a thousand customers a day. In this example, I will show you Fine Federal in Newington, Connecticut. They have eighty parking spots. The population of Newington is thirty thousand. Very similar in turn to Torrington. Apothetherapin, uh, Apothetherapeutics in Plainfield, Massachusetts has eighty-five plus parking spots. I hauled almost every one of these facilities. They were lovely, and I interviewed many of them. Um, Plainfield population, by the way, has ninety-eight hundred. And in an article, they state that they see six hundred customers a day. Oh, sorry, I wanted to prepare my statement. Um, Malagian in Northampton, Massachusetts, with a population of twenty-nine thousand, has eighty parking spots. Native Sun in North Alboro, Massachusetts, with a population of twenty-four thousand, has seventy-seven parking spots. Garden Remedies in Marlborough, Massachusetts, with a population of forty-one thousand, has eighty parking spots. And in an article touted that they see four hundred customers a day. Next page. Cana Provisions in Lee, Mass. Has forty parking spots and adjacent has twenty-five employee off, um, off-site parking. Jack's Cannabis in Northampton, Massachusetts, with a population of twenty-one thousand, has fifty-four parking spots. And I will also just remind you that all. All of these look nothing like this neighborhood. Next one is the Pass in Sheffield, Massachusetts, with a whopping population of thirty-three hundred people. Unfortunately, they were just building this. You can see the facility here. It's out in the middle of nowhere. They have thirty parking spots. The people that I interviewed, Jack's in Northampton, quote unquote, non-stop open to flows. The Pass in Sheffield, Mass, customers take as long as they need. They can spend fifteen to forty minutes in the location. Canva, Canva Provisions in Lee, Mass, when asked if the estimate of two hundred and twenty-five customers per day was accurate. Their direct quote was, oh, they're dreaming, at least double that. Again, I referenced a recent article that I read. Garden Remedies in Marlborough, Mass, four hundred customers a day. Apothetherapeutics, six hundred customers a day. Maritas, I apologize, I, I don't have to say that. Milford, Connecticut, five hundred customers a day. And Comcan and Recobith, Mass, Mass, eight hundred customers a day. The following I will read, the following I will read is directly, uh, from their request. Um, for the zone change in site application by Mr. Johnson. The team projects an average of two hundred and fifty customers a day or an average of twenty-five per hour. A thirty percent increase in the first thirty days, three hundred and twenty-five customers or thirty-three an hour. I'm referencing Garden Remedies in Marlborough, Mass, with a population of forty-one thousand, has four hundred customers a day and eighty parking spots. Quote, "A new customer would visit every two minutes with an onsite tunnel of six minutes. At peak times forecasting sixteen customers inside at a time." Reminder, based on my interviews, customers' average visits is ten to thirty minutes. I don't know anything I do in my day that takes me only six minutes. There are sixteen, so if that's the case, sixteen customers and ten employees is sixty, is twenty-six parking spots. I say nineteen here. I actually counted twenty parking spots. I don't know where they're referencing, twenty-four. Further outdoor queuing would be set up using stanchions outside the front facade. So as to shield pedestrians from onsite traffic flow. I don't think I have to say that again. He is admitting in his own words that we are shielding pedestrians from onsite traffic flow. He is admitting chaos in the parking lot. He knows very well. Interior design will support eight point-of-sale registers, he said himself. Eight registers meeting employees, backstop workers, plus security. Quote, "I love this. This is my favorite." "These hours will maintain quiet enjoyment and quality of life for nearby residents." Again, the hours, uh, they're proposing for this operation are Monday through Saturday, nine AM to eight PM. And Sunday, lovely quiet hours of Sunday, from ten AM to five PM. Um, here is an article from Marijuana Patrick. Looking quite lovely. Um, this was in January. Um, you're welcome to read this on your own time. Lower application, and this is all braggadocious about why, it opened up. Ready? Everybody prepares. Lower application and licensing fees, I'm going to start with this on worse. Creating micro businesses and small business license classes. Restricting vertical integrations or limiting the number of licenses as op, as an operator can hold. More robust social equity programs. I have to admit, I did not know how to sell marijuana cannabis three days ago. I've learned a lot. When recreational facilities opened up in Boston, I'm going to read you quotes. "New pod shops neighborhood says traffic jams are awful." "This has been terrible, Don Gothier." Um, uh, Lester, I, I should not have said this, Lester, residents who live near cultivate testified at the meeting. "We have cars outside our house seven days a week, twelve hours a day. We have no life there anymore. It's like living in a fishbowl. It's not fair." Montclair News, "A rise in room fill." "The closest dispensary to Montclair offering recreational mari- marijuana. As sales expanded beyond medical use for the first time in New Jersey Thursday. Doors opened at six AM. NewJersey.com reported the dispensary reached its seventy-five person capacity within ten minutes." Karen Yee of WNYC said on Twitter, "Some buyers were onsite as early as four forty AM." At another dispensary, the Apothecarium owned by Tara Ascent in Philly, Pittsburgh. Yee said on Twitter that medical patients were allowed in, in first as recreational users filed out orders on clipboards. People had waited online for two hours." And I provided some photography of that. Montclair, New Jersey. And I encourage all of you, uh, weedmass.com, it's a wonderful resource, source of your finding marijuana. Um, that's where I started, ended up on my search. I would go to weedmass.com. You can zoom anywhere, um, in the country. Um, and it shows you green for medical marijuana, flags, little pot leaves, and then it shows you orange pot leaves for recreational. So I zoomed in, um, I got the addresses of that because they don't give you, and then I did Google map search. I have much more. Again, I went Massachusetts, Connecticut, and all the way to New Jersey, um, for my, for my research. In summary. Not one single medical or recreational marijuana facility in the state of Connecticut, Massachusetts, or New Jersey. Has an exit or abuts a residential neighborhood. Every single facility in Connecticut, Massachusetts, and New Jersey are all located in an isolated location with easy access. Not one recreational marijuana facility within Connecticut, Massachusetts, or New Jersey. Has fewer than twenty-five customer parking spots and on average has between forty and ninety. Dispensaries are, this is a direct quote from an article that I apologize and not reference it. Dispensaries, oh, this was on who to hire. Uh, this article was on how to, you're hiring your personnel for dispensaries. It talks about the readers, it talks about everything. Dispensaries are cash businesses, making them a clear target for criminals. By approving this location, you are knowingly putting the residents and other businesses at risk. Based on his own words, again, on page three of the application. Mr. Johnson confirms that the location at nine fifty-seven East Main Street is completely inadequate. And will be both dangerous and unmanageable. We should not be talking about fluffing up curves to destroy some of the subcaps. Not Maybe Northwest, J B L L C fired their business to the Secretary of State on May thirty-first of this year. On that same day, they also registered companies in Norwalk, New London, Killingley, Hampden, Wellington, and a blanket southwest Connecticut. Based on the article I presented for Marijuana, Marijuana Business Daily. It is crystal clear, in my opinion, that Mr. Johnson, who lives in Boston, knows nothing nor cares anything. About the community of Torrington or the people that live on Yorkshire Street or adjacent businesses. This is, in my opinion, an attempt to pull the wool over the eyes of the planning and zoning. And a fast wrap to be the first recreational facility in our area. Without regard to the obvious destruction, he admits it will cost. If Mr. Johnson truly cared about Torrington or its residents. He would have taken more time and chosen one of the many properties available, better suited for this business. With this extreme customer flow. Representing the owners of nine seventy-seven East Main Street, the many residences who live on Yorkshire Street. And with the evidence I have supplied, I strongly urge you to deny this zone change. And tell Mr. Johnson to find a more suitable location if he would like to come to Torrington. I have one, um, addendum to this that happened after I heard this. At eleven forty-five today, while I was pumping gas at the Apple House. I got a call from someone who identified themselves as David. And David says, "I hear you were trying to reach me." I said, "I have no idea who you are." He says, "I'm from the collective." I don't know who the collective is. We had discussed the fact that my family's business had been in the area for almost forty-five years. We knew intimately. What Yorkshire Street and East Main Street is all about. We are sensitive to the neighbors and we are sensitive to the traffic. By the way, I did speak, um, to the officer that is on this. Um, he gave me Connecticut statistics, traffic statistics, and I know he agreed he's on this. He told me that there have been, in that small area of East Main Street, seventy-three accidents. Since, uh, twenty fifteen, and thirty-two of them have been at the intersection where, um.
Primaryage in Yorkshire.
Primaryage.
Primaryage Yorkshire.
Primaryage Yorkshire.
East Main.
And East Main Street. Anyway. I told David, who I do not know his last name, or how he got my cell phone number. Um, that I'm not opposed to a recreational cannabis facility. That's not my opposition. My opposition is here. And I also told him that if he values, um, making a good impression. This location will not be good. If he plans on going to other locations and, as he's already. If he plans on going to other locations and, as he's already in the state of Connecticut and he's using Torrington as an example, it will fail. So when I said this location is not ideal, it will be a nightmare. His direct quote was, we've looked and it was the only space. Today, at three o'clock, I brought my in-laws to the airport and I was driving from Bruday, to New Haven Airport. At three o'clock, I was heading east on East Main Street. I took a video, I would love to share with you, where the traffic was back all the way up ironically to where they're proposing. I stopped, got out of my car, and took a picture, which I'm happy to share with you. The traffic completely stopped all the way down the hill. May I show you the video? You're welcome to ask me questions, you want to ask me a question?
Why don't you finish, you forgot sort of, why don't you finish before.
You want to see the video?
I don't know, I guess you want to show us.
I do, I would love to show you the video. It was today at three o'clock. One more, one more thing. About to finish this. In my conversation with David, who has no last name, I asked him, we've gotten talking parking spots, and I said, well, where are yours, what are you going to go? And he said, I don't know, we haven't figured that out yet. Today, it seems like we have a plan that they'll be walking in two feet of snow to get to work on East Main Street. I'm sorry if I sound sarcastic. This, Torrington is very unique, this location is very unique. And again, I'm not opposed to this type of facility. This location is not right for it and there's no turning back. If you approve this, it will be a nightmare. And I explained to David, if they need to impress investors, and that's part of it, this is not going to do it. If they need to get, if they want to get in good graces at Torrington, this will not do it. It's a public relations nightmare. And it's all kinds of bad things waiting to happen. They need to be on an isolated location with easier, better in and out access and know they're near a nice residential neighborhood like this. Who, by the way, is a lot of seniors and many handicapped individuals, including the people in line in those parking buildings. Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward and state your address for reference.
Hello, my name is James Rustus. I rent at nine seventy-seven East Main Street. And I work twelve hours a day there and I have, have been there for thirty-six years. I think everybody knows East Main Street is a busy place. Right now, Yorkshire Street is a very quiet place. The back of my business is on Yorkshire Street. We have five trucks. There's a bus barn next door with fifteen buses. Our trucks go up and downhill usually once a day. They come in in the morning, they come back at the end of the day. We've been there since nineteen seventy-eight, or nineteen, roughly nineteen seventy-eight. And we're good neighbors. We look out for our neighbors. We respect their property, we don't park in front of their houses, we have our own parking area. And it's a nice neighborhood. There are several people who, Joe Mitchell lives right across the street from their exit. He walks everywhere, he doesn't drive. He's going to be walking up and down Yorkshire Street. We all slow down and wave to Joe. An extra five hundred cars moving up and down Yorkshire Street are not necessarily going to slow down and wave to Joe Mitchell and say hi. So I worry about his safety. I worry about George Gabriel, who is directly across from us, who is now on a scooter. He doesn't get around very well anymore. There's several houses up the street from the exit onto Yorkshire Street, ninety-two Yorkshire. There are five apartments above our business. So there are many people living in that area. There's the house directly next door, she walks everywhere too. That's why they're not even in the parking spaces right now because she walks everywhere and walks up Yorkshire Street. They show somewhere between nineteen and twenty spaces there that doesn't allow for snow removal. And I know in our parking lot, takes up about a twenty-by-twenty space early in the season to get rid of snow and probably a twenty-by-thirty to twenty-by-forty space by the end of the season. They're going to lose anywhere from two to four more of those spaces with snow. They talk about sixteen customers inside, that's sixteen spaces just for the people inside. People are going to be queued outside, they have to park too. Where are they going to park? Well, they're going to park on Yorkshire Street in front of people's houses. They're going to park in my parking lot, where I have a loading dock, where I need to be able to load in equipment. They're going to park in my tenant spaces because that's the closest spot. There's a walk-through where people walk through a small vacant lot and can get directly to their facility. That's our problem. They can block my loading dock, which with supply chain issues the way they've been, nobody needs to be waiting longer for equipment. There's a school karate, less than five hundred feet from their facility. Directly across the street, about a hundred and twenty feet away, is a driving school with sixteen-year-old kids who are there lined up on the deck outside and could easily cross the street there. Other excess parking, or if people are driving to their facility, the only other places with excess parking or a lot of parking are across East Main Street, which means they have to run across East Main Street to the next street driving parking lot or to the Charlotte Hungerford and Dunaisium space, Club Twenty-four, across the street, which means people running directly across East Main Street, peak time, five to eight o'clock in the dark, while people are trying to go up and down East Main Street. The sign, they mentioned the sign was posted. The sign was not posted. I have pictures almost every day of that sign laying on the ground. Today, somebody came by at about one o'clock and put the sign up. That sign's been down for all week, maybe longer. First windstorm that blew through, which was probably the weekend before last, blew that sign down and it's been down the whole time. So then the sign was not posted. There hasn't been access to that space on East Main Street for probably a decade. Nobody's, nobody has entered that space from East Main Street, it's been roped off. So now we're going to all of a sudden introduce five hundred cars through a space that nobody's been using. My business, we have four people who work there. And then there's another office next door and another office next to that, six people. Six people come in and out of there once or twice a day. I can tell you, I've waited ten minutes, twelve minutes, fifteen minutes to get out on East Main Street at five o'clock at night. Even if I, even if I go down the hill, you can wait a long, long time. And that's four of us in my office. I don't think people who have been shopping in there are going to be as patient as we are because we do it every day. There's a lot of traffic on East Main Street. I know there's some businesses on Yorkshire Street. We are small businesses, there's an insurance agent there. We are a small HVAC company. The bus barn, I'll tell you, I almost never see a bus going up and down Yorkshire Street. They get out on the road and they're, they're on their way. They mentioned that they'd be putting sidewalks in, built in front of that, no. The sidewalks are going in whether any of us want them or not. I'm losing two parking spaces and they were going to lose those spaces in the front regardless because they're taking the first ten feet with the sidewalks in. That, that was not something they're doing out of their kindness to their heart. I think as far as the definition of school, a karate school is a school. A driving school is a school. Kids are going in and out of there. Kids are pretty creative. I know when I was their age, it was illegal to have marijuana. Well, kids, now that it's illegal, I think kids are going to find a way if they're, if they're close by and they want to experiment. And if there are five hundred people going in and out of that place, who knows who's willing to sell to a kid, I don't know. There's a lot of people going through. There's going to be a lot of additional traffic down that street. For moving that many more people, that's additional traffic, no avoiding that. And I think their estimates are very light. As Kimberly spoke, there's going to be a lot more people than anybody's anticipating. And there is not a return. I don't know what recourse any of us have after they start parking in front of people's houses. They start parking in my parking spaces. They start parking in my tenant parking spaces. They start parking in front of my loading dock. What recourse do we have at that point? It's, the damage is done. I'd love to hear any questions.
Any questions, any comments, questions for Mr. Rustus?
No, I don't, I'll make a comment, but I have nothing to say.
Still make a comment now or?
I don't know if this name of.
Yeah, we'll keep going, I want to go to Zoom to make sure there's, if there's anybody out there to.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak, it's Mario Longabucco.
You speaking in favor or opposition?
In favor.
All right, we'll shift gears here again, all right, we'll go back. But you named an address for reference, please.
Mario Longabucco, forty-four twining Farm Lane in Torrington. And as a matter of full disclosure, I'm the realtor on that property for the Ross Brothers. It sounds to me like it's, it's more the use rather than the property. I do like the idea that you came up with this right turn only on Yorkshire. If I remember correctly, that would mean driving by the HVAC company on the right-hand side and driving by, I think Rokus' property, maybe one more. And that certainly would eliminate a lot of the traffic on Yorkshire. Now, a couple things. If we take this project and, and turn it, it's virtually the identical project that was approved at Starbucks. And Starbucks parking lot, I don't remember how many parking spaces are there, has to service a bank and Starbucks. It's bordered by residential. It's virtually the same thing. If, traffic on East Main Street, there is a lot of traffic. Okay, but if we, if we stop development because there's traffic on East Main Street, we wouldn't have Sky Top Shops, we wouldn't have Chipotle, we wouldn't have Marzano's, we wouldn't have Starbucks, we wouldn't have all these places. Property owners have a right to develop and lease their property so long as it pertains or conforms, rather, to planning and zoning. Okay? The fact that the bus company has chosen not to pull in off of East Main Street does not dictate that the town or anyone else is allowed just to take away those entries from the Ross Brothers. We've had all our boards and all our, the police force, everyone has chimed in on this property and it conforms, it's local business. There's, there's residential property all up and down East Main Street behind businesses. We, we can't, that's who we are, it's Torrington. And, and I understand Yorkshire's a quiet street, I think you've come up with a good solution. Now, I also happen to do some cannabis clients all around the state. For instance, Fine Fettle is a client of mine. The space that she mentioned, they had eighty spots in Newington, is in the middle of a strip center. It has a walk-in center there and it has a couple other uses. Those numbers are skewed, okay? The four or five hundred people a day numbers, common sense will tell you, the state of Connecticut just introduced seventy-something licenses throughout the state. So those, the one or two that are currently open, those numbers are going to come way down because the, the customer base is going to be spread all around. Okay? Torrington already does have a medical use. One of the, one of the speakers said that these folks were trying to be the first ones on the block. Well, the medical use is going to turn into a hybrid use, which is both. The state of Connecticut, when they issued the decree that cannabis was going to be legal, wanted it to be an economic driver. They wanted it to drive traffic to area businesses. I personally think we made a mistake the first time around by putting, by putting the medical use way on the outskirts of town. Okay? A karate school and a driving school, no disrespect, is not a school. Right? An adult cannot go to a Torrington school. An adult can go to a driving school. An adult can go to a karate school. All right, we have to, we have to, we have to look into the intent of, of the rulings and the regulations that we put forth as a community. So I, I am sympathetic that this is not going to be a bus terminal. It's going to be perhaps a cannabis. If it's not going to be cannabis, it's going to be something else, the bus people are moving away. So it's not going to be a bus terminal. So it's going to be something, there will be traffic on Yorkshire Street and the two or three businesses that are there have enjoyed free rein of entering on Yorkshire Street through years and years and years. I understand there could be concern about parking on Yorkshire Street. Well, that's just like every other street, there's going to have to be enforcement and no parking signs. So that's my take on it and, and I hope, I hope the committee or the commission will understand that the Russes have every right to lease the property and, and these guys have every right to come to town. And in closing, let me just say another thing. When somebody says you could go anywhere, that's nonsense, okay? You can't go in the downtown zone, which covers major arteries coming into Torrington as well as the downtown zone. Right? One might think, well, why don't they go to the Staples Plaza downtown zone? Why don't they go to Stop and Shop Plaza downtown zone? Okay, why don't they go up in the North End? Well, then we'll be crowding the guy who's on Winston Road. And I don't think you want two people right next to each other and have one of them fail. Why don't they go down South Main Street? Well, I think we know the answer to that, right? We, we have issues down on South Main Street that perhaps this type of business wouldn't be best suited for. That leaves East Main Street. And it only leaves East Main Street from right eight up because that's where the downtown zone ends. And I don't need to tell you, or maybe I do, I do it every day, there is no other place to go. There is no other place to go. They found a spot that is good. Maybe it's not an A location, but if people come in and tell us they're going to do two hundred fifty to three hundred customers a day, I think we have to take their word for it. We certainly took Starbucks' word for it and they're doing double or triple those numbers in pretty much the same exact scenario, pouring traffic onto residential streets. So please take that into consideration when making your decision and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, any questions, any comments at this point, before we go back to the audience? Back to the audience, would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward.
John Rustus, fifty Prescott Street, also a renter at nine seven seventy East Main Street. Well, I appreciate going after Mr. Longabucco because. Well, I appreciate going after Mr. Longabucco because he did make some great points. First of all, Starbucks is not open, so I guess we'll see what happens. We'll see what the complaints are from the other residences in those areas as well. Other things about Starbucks and Skytop. Skytop, again, as we go up East Main Street, we stop at a stoplight. We don't do that as you're going down to this property. This is halfway between two stoplights. I can tell you when I'm going down the hill here usually that's Mister, I'm sorry, I don't, can't really see your name. It's about fifty miles an hour and people go at a very good clip. So you are not at a stoplight. You are at a stoplight at Skytop as well. When Skytop was put in, we all remember what Skytop used to look like. Now there's a giant retaining wall. They restricted the access all the way up to the light. Now you drive in and you drive in from Heimrich. Yes, you can access it through whichever street that is. Whitewood, but it is much more difficult and you're certainly not going to attempt it going down East Main Street. You're going to turn at the light and that's why the entire frontage on Heimrich is parking. The, and again, so Starbucks, let's think of it that way. We're going up East Main Street, we stop at a light, then we can go right into Starbucks. If we're coming down East Main Street, we can attempt that left turn. I'll be curious to see how many people attempt that left turn. They're going to go down Torren Court West, around the back, and then probably all the way to the light and up East Main and in. I don't know if there's an access from the other street. Again, I've been over there, but I, I'll be honest, I don't know all the access. I know as you go, I think that's one of this stuff, as you go there, I know there is a no, two no entry signs there now. The other point I wanted to make is it seems as though the ideas around East Main Street are quite disjointed. We've been there many, many years. There's been dramatic changes to Skytop and the parking. The O'Reilly's that went in, there's a retaining wall that used to be frontage. But I'm sure everyone kind of thought, well, wouldn't it be nice not to have people pulling off East Main? So they direct them into, into Yorkshire Street and then to O'Reilly's. The Rokus property that used to have access from East Main Street, when that was redeveloped, they eliminated access from East Main Street. Now there's only access from Yorkshire Street. The pattern seems to be that we're trying to limit access from East Main Street. I would assume because we're trying to increase the better, or to increase a more safe and secure traffic pattern going down East Main Street. Any left-hand turn you make, as we've all experienced, is very difficult to do. I know there's two lanes there. I also know that if somebody stops taking a left-hand turn, there's a backup. We've all seen the Dunkin' Donuts across from the mobile station at the bottom of East Main Street. Some days if you go there very early in the morning, they are backed up onto East Main Street. Again, there is enough to go around, but there is not two lanes down there. But we all manage. Again, is it, is that great planning? I have no idea, but it doesn't seem to work at times of the day. I can tell you that we generally, we, we started working till whatever, later and later because there's no sense getting on East Main Street, going down the hill, because you're just going to sit. I can tell you of the number of accidents in our own property, cars that have come through our property and into their proposed property going down East Main Street. That has happened at least twice to us. I have been rear-ended on East Main Street twice. Again, we've all experienced it. We know how fast people go. We know what sand does to it. We know what the Trousse Street light does to it because we see the police officer there virtually three times a week because people are trying to get through that light. One thing, one other just note I wanted to make and I'm just going to walk over. I, I apologize. I apologize to those of you on Zoom. This is our tenant's parking. This is a grass lot. Our building sits right here. It would be very easy to walk through here to gain access there. Just to let you know, this is our front parking lot adjacent directly to their, I'm sorry, our front parking lot is right here. There's a grass lot right there. The other, the only other point I wanted to make is I, I had never thought about it until tonight. There is no no parking signs on Yorkshire Street. I don't know what the parking rules on Yorkshire Street is because nobody parks on Yorkshire Street. But again, if this goes through, I'm sure that's going to change. As Jay had said, or as James had said, it is a residential neighborhood. There are many elderly people. There are many people with disabilities on Yorkshire Street. That entire other side or the backside is house after house of many people that, again, we've known for many, many years. And there's concern of that. So if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but thank you very much. Appreciate you guys coming out.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Mike Paul in nineteen Tioga Street. And I just wanted to clarify a few things. People wear that Yorkshire is, is our ten zone, where the most restrictive zone in the town. It's residential, just smaller lots. And Yorkshire is, you know, a pedestrian street. There is currently parking on both sides of the street. I usually travel up that street at least two or three times a day. And if there is cars parked on the street and there are two cars trying to go, it's tight. And if you head out of this, this site and head to the east, to the top of Yorkshire Street on the corner where Jim Rokus' building is at, he has an insurance agent in the front. He leases out two back garage spaces, a little office space. Some guys that are basically rebuilding campers for food trucks or food trailers. They usually park two pickups there. They're usually parked in the street. When you come around the corner, it's tight. When the automobile place went in, if you go up and look at it, if you pull to the stoplight, you stop at the stoplight, somebody coming out of there is hanging clear back into the other incoming lane. And that light, if you stop there, it's a long light. You have to wait. But if you're someone that's living back down on Tioga or any of the streets off of Tioga and they're headed east, they will go up Yorkshire instead of going to Tioga to turn because it's impossible to turn there. And they'll wait for that light. So usually get cars stacked there. So I think that you really need to, you know, continue this hearing. Go out and take a look at those field conditions. I don't think the traffic officer considered those things. I think he was looking at the primary entrance on Yorkshire. I understand all the issues with East Main Street pulling in and off of East Main Street. Making left-hand turn out there, I think is going to be impossible as, as people accept. Because I know that when you leave and go down Tioga Street, when you try to make the left-hand turn on Tioga Street, it's the same situation. The people stack up there. They pull through the subway apartment line, they're south, they're heading south and pull out their other entry on Main Street. So there are traffic issues there. The studio that everybody's talking about being kind of like an adult program, when they have their programs there, when they have their award programs, those people park on the street because there's so many people. It's a surprisingly successful business. It's been there as long as I've lived in the neighborhood. And he's, if you look at the trophies, he's obviously, he does a good job. And if they're using the parking spaces of the Hertz, does Hertz no longer exist? We know that. And if they are using.
I'm sorry, they do not exist.
They do not exist?
No.
Who's that, Jeremy?
No, it's a real.
And the curb cut onto Yorkshire, when I, the first map that I saw that showed all the traffic coming in off of East Main Street, exiting on Yorkshire Street as if it was one-way. And there's been revisions made to it. I can see the ceiling. And I see that that's a twenty-five, twenty-four foot cut, curb cut right now, which tells me it's going to be two-way. And I can tell you, if you're heading south or heading west, the, the best way to leave that site is to come down the Tioga Street and turn because you're not going to want to go to Yorkshire Street and sit at the traffic light and wait for it to allow you to turn or to be behind somebody just turning left and wait. It's just what the commissioner said here is the people will find the easiest way to get there. And that's where it's going to be anybody that's headed west. And who's going to be coming to this facility? Primarily people from the west. If, because you've got Lishfield, you've got Goshen, you've got all those places that are going to use Torrington like they always do for everything else as a service to the county. It'll be just another thing that happens in Torrington. It won't happen in their communities. And one question is clarified if the the catch basin that they're putting in, are they dumping more water in there now? From what was previous? Are they making any, any additional water into that Yorkshire catch basin? Jason or?
Jeremy, it's already highly impervious, so I doubt it's any different.
What's that?
I said it's, it's current condition.
Is it, is it sloping towards East Main Street? It's my question.
I don't, they're not redoing the part.
Okay.
So I don't think, I mean, it's current state.
Because right now what happens is water at the basin of Tioga in the south east corner, that, that catch basin, when we hit rain, shoots water out of the ground about this high.
I know, I do know Mike Paul had some concerns about water getting, using that basin that's already in the road. So they, 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 he asked to have that second basin installed to keep water out of the, you know, additional water out of the street. I, I don't know any other details besides that.
The other issue that happens is that on the corner of Tioga and Yorkshire Street, where the medical office building is, is they have, they have an open curb cut. And what happens there is people come around, they cut across the parking lot in order to make that corner to go up the hill.
Mr. Paul, for clarification, there is a light at that intersection, correct?
No.
That's across from the gas station?
That's right. But people will turn onto Tioga, come and turn and shoot up Yorkshire and drive across the medical parking lot. It's the same on the road because it's fun.
So you're saying currently the school, which is the race, partners in Yorkshire?
Yeah, when they have their, when they have their ceremonies for their kids, there's no way they can handle the, the number of kids that they have there.
So how, how often do they?
They do it, it happens probably three or four times a year. It's not a problem. And most of those kids are this big. I'm saying we're not. It's not guys.
How much, how much space do they consume of?
They'll park. I would say basically from the bus station down to the corner. So I think basically you have a stacking problem in Yorkshire and East Main Street. I don't think there's any way you're going to control people from coming out of that lot and not making a left-hand turn and coming up Yorkshire and turning into that lot from the south or from the north. Even if it's signed, if they can't get in off East Main Street, what are they going to do? The next best thing. And who's going to police that? Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition? You can come forward if you have new information. Make a brief, please.
I just, I just wanted to make a couple comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kimberly Rustus, nine seven seven East Main Street, owner of Owners Patent Rustus. There was a comment about Starbucks. I would be happy to do research and study how many walk-in customers are visiting Starbucks versus how many are actually driving, the cars keep moving. I would hazard a guess that the, that the parked cars in Starbucks are far fewer than the four hundred that they proposed. I also want to tell you I did speak to the owner today of Silver River. They see two hundred customers a day and he's expecting to double when the new regulations go through. Their hours are not seven days a week as well. Oh, and the other thing is, is I did do research. This traffic that they're predicting is equal to Chipotle. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application? Will they be able to zoom out there? Your commissioners have any questions?
I said.
Go ahead.
There are maybe a couple. I just want to address sometimes things get said and there's not enough facts that support it. And I just want to point out that the comment regarding crime, it's not supportable. It's not supportable at all. In fact, when we were going through the, the sort of review that the town did, pretty extensive, to determine whether or not we're going to entertain retail. We obviously have a special. Our chief spoke extensively with Massachusetts Chiefs and essentially came back with, it's just no issue. It's not an issue. So I just wanted to correct that. Okay. Secondly, you just made a mention that the guy who has the medical marijuana facility right now said he's going to go from two hundred to four hundred, so he's only adding two hundred. Basically, two hundred, I mean, if you say he's going from two hundred to four hundred, that simplistic statement says to me, he's got two hundred medical customers currently and he's going to go to four hundred, which means he's only adding two hundred retail customers. If his maximum consumption or his maximum is going to jump by two hundred, it's just, he's adding two hundred, basically, two hundred retail.
It's doubling volume.
It's doubling.
I understand what he's doing, but retail, he's medical and retail.
Back and forth.
No, I just, I'm making my point. And, and I'm just wanting to understand that that's, that's how I interpret that statement.
I'm not under, I'm sorry, can you say that again? I wasn't following your, your argument on that.
It's not argument. I'm calling out the difference in what you said. You said that he has, he stated that he had two hundred customers. And then when he opens retail, he expects it to be four hundred customers. That's an increase of two hundred, which means he expects two hundred retail customers to that, I guess. That's per day count. Okay, and I believe the capital was somewhere in that ballpark, two hundred fifty maybe. So I just wanted to point out that's, I don't know what to do with that data. It doesn't say much really to me. I think Starbucks, I think you were hinting at it. I don't believe it's the same at all in terms of what it does. It has a stacking component. There's a drive-through component. How much in-store traffic there is, people getting out of cars, parking, is unknown. We don't know. We don't have one to compare it to in town. So I don't know where that's going, but this, this particular component doesn't have a drive-through. So it's kind of a wild card. I'm not really sure how we can compare them. I don't think they're the same type of sites. The rest of it, I, you know, I think the big component for me and the only thing that matters to me is the residential piece. Is the residential piece. That's the part that matters to me, the accident level, it's going to exist. The turns on East Main Street, all of the traffic, all of that's going to exist. What really matters to me is no matter what happens in the property, because the property has a right to be used as a business piece of property. The, the fact of the matter is, is what is the impact on the residential piece that puts it? So that will be my main concern, and that's all I love this.
I'd like to concur, Mr. Pierce, you know, too, that. If this site was blocked on Yorkshire. I think we'd be having a different conversation to see. You know, the, the in and out on East Main Street. Is going to be difficult. My personal issue is. And as you presented in your, your presentation, you already have off street parking for your help. Coming out of the gate, I have a real problem with that. Because you're acknowledging right up front, we don't have enough parking. We're anticipating, we're not going to have enough parking. You're exiting out onto a residential street that's already busy. You know? I'll, I'll go to task with the schools, the driving school and the crime school. You know, there's a lot of young individuals hanging around. And being dropped off and being supervised and sometimes unsupervised because mom and dad are late to pick up little Johnny. And they're just hanging out. But that's, that's where I'm at with it. Any, anyone else?
Yeah, my, uh, thing is definitely the residential, I don't think it personally works, uh, at, at all, uh, everything going on on Yorkshire, I think, uh, it was kind of. Whitewashed, uh, on that whole twenty four foot, um, apron, uh, I think that was just a, a smokescreen, let's call it. Um, if they really wanted to push it off to the right, they would have gone twelve feet. Uh, now let's talk about school, the karate school, both of my daughters went there, and let me tell you something. There's little kids and what they learn there is confidence. And that's a school, I don't care what anybody says, whether it's a ballpark, with this, that, or the other thing. That's where they learn how to grow up and it's a school. And if it's not within, or if it's within the five hundred feet, this doesn't even work. It shouldn't even been brought to the application, I think it was an oversight and that's where I stand in this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Mr. Riley, Mr. Harris?
Um, the, the, excuse me, if, if, if I, if I missed it in the, in the presentations. Do we have an idea of what the customer, uh, volume expectation is in? In peak hours, because obviously if we, we've got a, we've got a number. Per day, uh, uh, is what I think has been presented so far, but we know that there are peak hours, um. And, and if you're talking six minutes a customer and in peak hour time, how many cars is that? I, I haven't heard that number unless I missed it. Um. But, um.
We can bring it back, you know, can?
Yeah.
What is the anticipated peak hours of business? If there is any.
So typical peak hours are, I guess, Friday, uh, afternoon through the evening and all day Saturday tend to be kind of the peak. Hours in general, um, I think in application we said we expect about fifty percent increase. So it takes us from about two fifty, uh, to about right below four hundred, which is forty customers an hour on average. And I think what we did the math for that, um, when we did the math for that, it's one and a half customer. Uh, uh, sorry, a customer every minute and a half. Right, so customer every, you know, less than. Two minutes, uh, or sorry, we're going to have a customer come in, uh, no more frequent than two, every two minutes. So it's still not a lot. Uh, are you going to have a rush here and there potentially, but even at double that capacity? I think in our, in our presentation, we said even four times that X, so four X that, we're looking at sixteen customers come currently at our site, which. You know, both in a parking lot and, um, through, like, the inside of the store, we should easily be able to manage. Um, I do have a bunch of other kind of commentary, I don't know if it's just kind of common, some of the, other things that have been said, or come back to that.
You summarize, go ahead.
I think, I mean, there were, there were a lot of kind of facts thrown out, hard and fast here, and. Uh, I know obviously a lot of research was running into that, but I've done this for eight years, uh, I ran some of these stores and some of the things were said are just not true. Shirley's open seven days a week, I'm not sure what, what kind of research was done. Uh, Hartford Stanford plotting in, in sort of Hartford Stanford Shirley's locations are in plots, there's many, many other tenants there. So, uh, you know, saying that there's seventy or eighty parking spots is somewhat irrelevant. Uh, you know, two hundred parking spots for a large growth site that employs, uh, you know, a hundred plus people in the middle of nowhere. It's, it's, as far as retail side goes, I think it's relevant. Saying that there's no stores in northeast that's in a neighborhood, simply not true. The busiest store in New Jersey, Delmar, truly sort of middle of neighborhood. Uh, I've opened up Oxford, Massachusetts, middle of a neighborhood, both medical and adult use with less parking spots in here. So, you know, some of these things are, it's, it's interesting. Uh, speaking of facts, Massachusetts, uh, end of Q four, hundred and eighty four stores. Uh, average, assuming a hundred dollar ticket. Uh, we're, we're looking at less than three hundred people a day on average, and so talking on some of these each stores. Fine, there's some stores that are doing more than that, but on average, less than three hundred. Q one, that was about, about two hundred and ten customers average per store per day. Q two this year, now we're below two hundred a day. So, yeah, saying there's some stores at very strategic good locations, they, you know, having five, six hundred people, that is happening. But on average, no, not at all. You know, Lester opened up four years ago, yes, there were huge lines, they're the only store in Massachusetts serving sixty million people. Of course, there's going to be lines, there's no lines now. So some of these are kind of definitely taken out of context, I think my point of view is we have chosen a site that the town zoned. We met all the requirements of the lead. Yes, should we, could we have made that exit a little bit more narrow? Sure, that was not an oversight, we weren't trying to pull a fast one, we tried to react pretty quick from feedback from the chief. And we're going to, I only stated, wouldn't have happy to kind of make it as narrow as permissible, right? To kind of limit it any which way we want, so hopefully that's not going to be kind of a restrictive factor. And I know, uh, someone on my team, David reached out, uh. To Kimberly, uh, that was as a courtesy, I know Kimberly reached out to our investors, um, I think you might have found them on, on the registration site where we registered the LLC. So that was courtesy, I asked David to reach out and, and introduce himself, so he did not say his last name, I apologize. But that was purely as a courtesy, just kind of help address any questions, we didn't know what kind of questions you had for us. Uh, let's see. Anyway, I think those are the, those are kind of the things, so I said, there's a lot of facts out there, most of them are not true, uh, based on experience, easy to kind of pick and choose some stats, so. Mention that.
Any other commissioners, any comments, questions?
I just, I mean, I just kind of reiterated, I guess, but my, what my main concern is Yorkshire's strong on parking. That's what I meant with that, because I do think it's going to use this. To. Go to this.
You have anything else?
Yes, I just wanted to touch on some of the traffic related concerns, um, but also the, the, the statement about the, the karate school and. And that I did, I did the search and unfortunately I did not. From schools, I considered. Schools, age, you know, kindergarten, first grade, public schools, recreational facilities, I was not considering a karate school as recreational facility. And there was no guidance, uh, you know, in relation to what you would consider, so. However, that regulation was written not to preclude. But to, to merely inform you that with these in proximity, your decision would be. Would need be taken into account east in proximity, it wasn't to exclude the use, it was just to, to allow you to, to look at it in proximity. There's been a lot of discussion on traffic, East Main Street's a heavy street and unfortunately, pretty much no matter what goes into here. It's going to either use East Main Street or it's going to use Yorkshire Street. What we've tried to do is, is balance, uh, the, the concerns with the neighbors, that the neighbors would obviously have. Uh, that Yorkshire Street is, would be used as, as access for, uh, commercial use, like the other commercial uses that are using it presently. So, uh, from the point of view of taking a left or a right on Yorkshire, it really doesn't make any sense for somebody to take a left on Yorkshire. Because if you want to go. Left on Yorkshire to get back to East Main Street, you might as well just take a right out of East Main Street at the site. If you're going to take a left out of East Main Street, it makes more sense to go. Left or right on Yorkshire up to the light to go left on, on East Main Street, so. The, the, the orientation of the driveway was done to, to address, uh, specifically the, the, the traffic of the police dominance. Um, but certainly we can reorient it to be tighter if, if that's the desire. Uh, this is from a traffic generating point of view, this is not a heavy traffic generator. Uh, I've been working in, in this business for almost forty years and I've done a lot of traffic reports in my, my day, and this is not a heavy traffic generator. But there's a lot of traffic on East Main Street and you can't get around that. Um, you know, it, unfortunately, it, it is what it is, uh, but from a point of view of, of this being considered a. Heavy traffic generator, it certainly isn't at, at the, the expected two hundred and fifty visitors a day, which. The knowledge certainly indicates is, is what we, we expect if the business is doing good. And it's even been corroborated by the other, other facility in, in town. Um, so we, we really try to balance, balance the needs all around of the neighborhood, of the facility. Understanding the constraints on East Main Street and, you know, I don't know if there's, I don't think there's a, a better balance, you could. You could restrict all traffic to East Main Street, but then you're subjecting people, uh, to, that would want to try to take a left. Coming out of East Main Street instead of being able to go to the light. Even though that's going to be a smaller proportion of the people exiting. Most people are going to exit to the right because your major population centers are accessed via route eight and through the center of town. Um, you know, Lishfield, and, and all, we do respect, these are not major. This is not a major population centers in that direction, the major population and access would be via route eight. So, and it should be a right out of the facility. Uh, thank you for your time this evening, I appreciate the opportunity to do, just not do for you. And one more. One more question pertaining to, just a curiosity. So I'm not familiar with what Massachusetts law is surrounding cannabis, nor am I familiar with New Jersey. And I think it's allowing. An online or an order delivery. Uh, components, where you don't have to go to the store, you can have the store ship. The cannabis to your house, am I correct?
That is right.
Okay, does that happen in New Jersey and also in Massachusetts, same thing?
Uh, New Jersey is very limited, I don't think they're doing it for adult use yet, I don't think they're issuing those licenses, very few medical operators did it just because, uh. Logistically, revenue was not quite there, Massachusetts has implemented it with social equity applicants only. It required two drivers, so it's very cost prohibitive, some, some. Uh, delivery services trying to do it in a, in a kind of more, uh, urban area. Um, but Connecticut will be offering up or is issuing delivery licenses where these operators can partner with stores such as this and any other store. And come, you know, somebody does place an order, they come pick it up in the morning, they'll kind of. Pick up, I don't know, twenty orders and they'll go out for, for half the day, they'll come back, so that should alleviate some of that, you know, traffic.
My curiosity is, do you answer the expectation for the use of that, uh, sort of? Opportunity, i- it's, it's, you know, we think it's, we're hoping to use it to some extent, uh, it'll be one car coming. Coming twice, once in the morning and once kind of midday to kind of pick up products, so it'll go, it'll go out twice. But we don't have, you don't have the numbers, there hasn't been enough of that going out to have experience that you can speak to.
No, because it's, it's honestly, it's, so I oversaw the northeast, uh, and it's being not implemented anywhere in the northeast right now. I, I know we did in New York, uh, out of two stores, uh, it was really just for medical, New Jersey, it's just for medical. Alex in Massachusetts, the only state right now in the northeast that has adult use delivery. And it's being done quite sparsely because the regulations are, are somewhat prohibitive for that.
Can I also make a quick confirmation and correction on a couple of things?
Right, and they would address with?
James Rustus renting at nine seventy seven East Main Street. Um, there was a statement made about the logical way that people are going to go out of Yorkshire is up to the light, you know, take a right and go up to the light. Mike Paul also said that, no, people go down and people from Tyoka come up. My property, we do not have a pass through, we have a parking lot up front for office staff, we have a parking lot up back for five, five trucks for technicians. If we are heading west, we go down the hill because the light takes forever, just like Mike Paul said. You will be backed up, if, if it's busy, you'll be backed up around the corner, and if there's a lot of cars coming in and out of O'Reilly Auto Parts, you can't get out. If we're heading west, we go down the hill and exit off, off of, uh, Tyoka down at the bottom. If we're heading east, we go up and wait for the light. Um, so I just wanted to confirm that, and if people are exiting onto Yorkshire Street, they're going to go whichever way they're, they're headed. They're not going to go up the hill to that light if they're headed, um, west, they're just, they're not going. And that's just, you know, thirty six years of, of traveling on Yorkshire Street. Thank you.
Mike Paul, nineteen Tyoka Street, the other, uh, issue on Tyoka Street is the fact that Subway, uh, they have their tractor trailer trucks. Uh, Cisco trucks, you're familiar with them, you see them around, they park their Cisco truck on the street and offload it. At least two times a week, which takes that intersection and cuts it down virtually to one way traffic. So if we're picking up additional traffic there, it's going to create a traffic gap. So. Basically, I just don't see, you know. There being any way, and I just know that what people are going to do, they're not going to go up East Main Street. And turn into the site, they're not going to go to the light and turn into the site. Because in order to make a left hand turn off of East Main Street, the light is also a nightmare. They're going to cut in on Tyoka and race up to Yorkshire. And he says that it's, you know, without a lot of traffic, well, figure two hundred cars coming down the street. And my kitchen window from the street is as close as you guys are sitting. And those lines are going to come around every one of them. Figured that, how many of those guys between, in the winter time, between four thirty and eight are going to be flashing on our house? It's not a residential neighborhood, yes.
May I, may I, Commissioner?
Make it quick.
Yeah, I will, um, my real long book again, but from what I'm hearing, um, the karate studio uses. Yorkshire Street, Subway uses Tyoka Street. Uh, O'Reilly's dumps out onto Yorkshire Street, C and G dumps out onto Yorkshire Street, Rook is dumps out onto Yorkshire Street. And now we're saying that another business can't dump out onto Yorkshire Street. Um, so that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Can I quickly just respond to that? Okay, that's fine. Does he, I'm going to have anything else to summarize for? Continue with the hearing here.
I mean, just. One clarification on the traffic, all I said was that people who are going to go west or. Or want to go down the hill on East Main Street will take a right out of the site, not. Take a left out of, onto Yorkshire and then go down and then face the same traffic issue of getting on East Main Street, if they're going to get on East Main Street to take a right, they're going to do it from the front of the site. Um, if they're going to want to take a left, then the logical thing, as you indicated, would be to go up Yorkshire and to the light and take a left at the light. Uh, so. Um, once again, we, we hope you consider our implication, we thank you for your time.
Thank you. The time is nine thirty four, I declare this public hearing closed and we will make a decision at a later time. The time is nine thirty-four. I declare this public hearing closed and we will make a decision at a later time. Moving on to item number four, C defines nine thirty-four, proposed amendments to the City of Torrington zoning regulations act. Applicant for a zoning commission proposal, proposed zoning regulation amendments for residential density caps in the downtown district section three point one, four point one five, and six point eight. Jeremy, you wanna just jump into your panel here?
Sorry, I didn't catch the very end of that. Do you want me to jump right into the metal?
Information.
Yeah, I hear a lot of background noise, sorry.
Serving out of commission this evening is Diane Carroll, Brent Peresino, Jim Mivinsky, myself, Greg Mealy, uh Donovan Riley, Starly Arias. Also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifer and assistant city planner Nate Marty Cyrus. Mr. Peresino, do you have anything to add?
City planning and zoning commission will notice. Diane's zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing under the following application. On the incident of the dispute in twenty twenty-two in City Hall on a tar and road two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrenet, Connecticut. Proposal amendment to the City of Torrington zoning regulations. Applicant for a zoning commission proposal. Proposed zoning regulation amendments, remove residential density caps in the downtown district sections three point one, point four, point one five, and six point eight. Time of hearing immediately following the close of the second public hearing. Appreciate the above mentioned proposal on file at Land Use Office, City Hall, on formation of Torrenet, Connecticut. Greg Mealy, Jeremy Planning and Zoning Commission, on the second day of November twenty twenty-two. Thank you for your question, personal. All right. How about now, Jeremy?
Yeah, so this this has come up quite a few times over, you know, going back to to Marty's days. Um we've been having a lot of conversations with the with the mayor and economic development director about the necessity of having these caps at all in downtown. We want to encourage housing. Um all, you know, all the housing we can get really in downtown, while at least keeping our um you know, the option there for for uh for commercial uses um where they're appropriate. Uh you know, I had some discussions with the with the other code officials, fire marshal, building official, and and looked at the the other codes we already have for um, you know, what we can build in downtown. And I think our other codes and regulations cover us without the, you know, the necessity of having um caps, at least within the downtown district. Um so the proposal, you know, I have this, I have the full memo, but the proposal basically goes through our regular multifamily regulations, our um affordable housing regulations and our incentive housing regulations, and remove the cap, basically remove caps, any any kind of um residential unit caps in in the downtown district.
I mean, fair. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do this. It's it's a limited downtown district right situation and it didn't, to me, it follows our planning development in a sense because it's encouraging basically the residential component, which is what we're trying to get out of downtown here.
So what the way it's proposed to, it it still requires all uh first floor, uh you know, ground level um space to be commercial. Um but it does allow us, by special exception, to waive up to fifty percent in a specific building. Um you know, if it's warranted, you know, that's what special exceptions are for. Um so I mean, that's really the only other wrinkle.
Any other commissioners, any comments?
What's the wrinkle right now, you're saying, Jeremy?
So uh I everything on the first floor, the the ground level floor has to be commercial, but it gives us that that waiver power of up to fifty percent of the ground floor space by special exception.
Okay.
And and it it's, everything's by special exception if there's new construction. But if it's just conversion of existing space in a building, that's not on the ground floor, it's by site plan. So so you'll see in the chart, um you know, if people actually have this, the the marked up version in the chart, there's a P, N, and E in in those spaces now. So it depends on what type of uh, whether it's a construction or a or a conversion or new construction or conversion.
So if I may, um uh Chairman, um uh Jeremy, so the original caps were partly, they were, they were, the purpose of the caps originally were were to make sure that there was commercial space sort of reserved downtown or 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 were they um more safety related in terms of, or or is it some combination of those two things?
There was probably a worry about, I mean, I I can't tell you for sure, but there was probably a worry about over densifying, you know, res- residential in downtown. But um but you know, the, over the years, it's kind of being proven that we need the residential in downtown and um you know, I I in my, you know, I I don't know if we're gonna ask me to read the memo in or not, but if you research towns or or cities that are, you know, our size or larger, you won't find many, if any, that that have any kind of caps in their downtown areas. Most of them and and, you know, especially like the New Havens and Hartford's, the bigger ones, the, you know, have form-based zoning, uh form-based codes where they don't worry about setbacks or or unit, numbers of units or anything like that. They're they're, they worry about building form. So this is kind of like a hybrid regulation where where we're 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 sort of worried worried about building form, but not worried about then, you know, the standard zoning, you know, the 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 standards way of zoning either with with the with setbacks and and densities.
Certainly, so it certainly gives us much more flexibility.
Yeah, yeah. And it gives us, again, it gives us flexibility. If the demand is there for more housing, we can allow some more units on the on the bottom floor. Um so the other, the only one other thing I can think of too is I I did say if there is ground floor units, they have to have a common entrance, so we don't so we don't see a bunch of doors on a, you know, that go into units on a on a on a street level floor. But yeah, I mean, it's, it it really is to encourage the housing that we need in downtown while still having um still having the 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 guidelines there to to encourage the commercial use too on at street level.
Thank, thank you.
Any other commissioners, any comments? I'll go to the public. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Being known, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Being known, the time is seven forty-two. Our excuse in a while. Your time is nine forty-two. Public hearing closed. We'll make a decision.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve proposed amendments to the City of Torrington zoning regulations, the applicant is Torrenet Planning and Zoning Commission. Proposed proposed zoning regulation amendments, remove residential density caps in the downtown district sections three point one, four point one five, and six point eight. In fact, the date of the regulation change and amendments shall be the day after publication of the local notice of decision in the local newspaper.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I second.
All those in favor and opposed? Time's nine forty-three. Moving on to item number five, public hearings beginning at seven PM, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. City Hall, Torrenet, two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrenet, Connecticut. A proposed amendment to the City of Torrington zoning regulations. Applicant for a planning and zoning commission proposal. Proposed zoning regulation amendments, special events, revise section three point one twenty-one point zero zero and add new section six point one three, special effects. Uh make a motion that take Diane, one second.
One second.
All those in favor?
Any.
So both moving on to item number six, old business, we have none. Moving on to item number seven, new business, a site plan fourteen twenty-eight. Advocate Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, Brian Oler, location twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street. Proposal site plan modification to add seventeen parking spaces. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes. Good evening. Uh my name is Tim Kuhn. I'm a professional engineer with J R Russo and Associates. I'm here tonight along with Brian Oler from Charlotte Hungerford Hospital. Um if I could share my screen or if someone could bring up the site plan, I could go over what we're proposing.
Uh we can, we can, if we unshare, we can just give Tim control of the screen.
Go for it.
All right. Everybody see that?
I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Um so the site is twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, which is a one point eight six acre parcel on the south side of New Litchfield Street, uh currently occupied by a medical office building that is owned in by Charlotte Hungerford Hospital. As you can see in the plan, the uh the the building is kind of offset in the back. There's a curb cut from Litchfield Street that comes down into a thirty-four space parking lot. There's currently thirty-four spaces. Last month, we were in front of you and received a jo- a zone change to local business um which allows us to come before you tonight and propose an expansion of the parking lot. What we are proposing is to add an additional seventeen parking spaces on the north side of the existing aisle um between the existing aisle and New Litchfield Street. Um this will require minor grading. It will require the need to do some transplanting of existing uh landscape materials and or replacing them. And in addition, we're proposing a couple of uh new trees to uh to bring it up to the current requirements for your uh your screening um in this zone across from the residential uh neighborhood. Um even with the increase in the parking lots, we're still well under the impervious coverage requirement. Um and we also, the the proposed parking lots do meet the setbacks required in the local business zone. Uh there will be no changes to the stormwater system. Uh currently, there's a catch basin that discharges to a to a stormwater management basin um that was part of the original development. And we're simply gonna utilize that existing catch basin and the existing stormwater system so that we don't require any changes to the drainage system at the site. In addition, we are also proposing a freestanding sign, which will be located near the entrance. The sign will be uh forty feet high, uh I'm sorry, forty square feet, ten feet high. Let me correct that, but it'll be non-illuminated. So although this this current plan does show an electric line coming out to that, that'll be taken off because it's gonna be a non-illuminated sign. It'll just have, you know, reflective lettering. So we won't need to cut the parking lot to bring uh that utility across to it. We have received the comments from the city staff. We believe we have addressed all those comments. Um and we've also received a copy of Jeremy's memo with the proposed approval conditions, and we find no issue with any of those conditions. So if you have any questions requiring more detail, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Thank you. Any commissioners, any comments, questions? Jeremy, you wanna read your memo, please? If you'll let go, you want me to read it?
Thank you. The Charlotte Hungerford Hospital property owner has filed an application for property at twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, tax assessor map two nineteen, block zero zero three, lot zero zero eight, to modify and grade the site to expand the existing parking lot to add seventeen parking spaces. The project does not propose any changes to stormwater infrastructure and proposes proposes to utilize the existing basin in in the project area. Minor changes to the proposed, minor changes are proposed to landscaping on the site. A new freestanding, I should say, sign along New Litchfield Street is proposed as part of this application. The property is owned by the Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, is one point eight six acres in area and is located in the LB local business zone. The zone change that reclassified this parcel to parcel to LB local business was effective November third, twenty twenty-two. A previous site plan approval under application number four three eight was approved in June two thousand for the initial development of the property as an office building and has expired. The current medical office use is a conforming use in the LB zone under zoning regulation section three point one, table of permitted uses subsection five point two zero. A new site plan approval is required for these proposed site modifications. Plans submitted are titled Site Plan Modification, twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, Torrenet, Connecticut, map two, two one nine, block zero zero three, lot zero zero eight, zone LB by J R Russo and Associates LLC, East Windsor, Connecticut, dated August twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, two sheets. Staff has met previously with the property owner and engineer to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note, a forty-square foot forty-square-foot non-illuminated sign has been proposed as part of the site improvements. The sign will be ten feet in height and will match the design of other CHH signs in the area. Other staff comments. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to me dated November first, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comment on the comments on the plans. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses in the vicinity of the subject property that requires wetlands review for this proposal. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, I request you specify the tree species to be added to the created island and the tree and shrub species to be relocated replaced. I recommend that all proposed tree removals be replaced with red maples or another native alternative. Lighting, no lighting is shown on the site plan. New lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the city zoning code, including the use of full cutoff fixtures. We encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, signage noted on the map in accordance with section five point one five of five of the zoning regulations. The applicant must submit a sign permit application to the city land use office for an approval prior to installation. Conservation, this application was not referred to the conservation commission for review and comment. Architectural Review Committee, this project will not require ARC review. Torrenet Area Health District, Tom Stansfield, Deputy Director of Health, in an email to me dated October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, indicated that he has no comments on the plans. Engineering, Paul Cunson, City Engineer, in an email to me dated October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments. The property owner shall be aware that these parking lot improvements are within the Torrenet Water Pollution Control Authority sanitary sewer easement, and as such, improvements are governed by the easement agreement. A, confirm with WPCA that it is acceptable to plant trees over or near the sanitary sewer main tree in nine-foot center island. B, sanitary manhole at start of new curbing west end. One, verify with WPCA that the frame and cover may need to be adjusted in elevation to match new curb elevation. And two, this work shall be inspected by the WPCA. Police Traffic, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus, in an email to me dated October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, indicated that he has no comments on the plans. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta, in an email to me dated November fourth, twenty twenty-two, indicated that he has no comments on the plans. WPCA, Edward Towsey, WPCA Administrator, in an email to me dated November fourth, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments. The WPCA crew is checking the condition of the manhole frames and covers and will adjust and or change if needed before this wo- work is started. Trees should be planted at least twenty feet away from the city sewer line. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette, in an email to me dated November fourth, twenty twenty-two, offered the following comments. The proper number of accessible parking spaces must be maintained in accordance with IBC section eleven oh six and table eleven oh six point one. With the overall number of spaces being increased, it may trigger the need for an additional accessible space. Conclusion, I recommend the approval of site plan number fourteen twenty-eight, twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, site plan to add seventeen parking spaces and signage with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall follow the comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, outlined in his November first, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Two, the applicant shall follow the comments of Paul Cunson, City Engineer, outlined in his October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Three, the applicant shall follow comments of Ed Towsey, WPCA Administrator. Outlined in his November fourth, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Changes to proposed landscaping and planting shall be shown on the fin- final filed plans. Four, zoning permits are required prior to alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two copies of the proposed, uh of the approved plan, including. The engineer stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the of the site plan for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section. Eight point three, four point three point P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning permits to begin construction.
Is the applicant having any to summarize, or you're all set?
We're all set, if you are.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan fourteen twenty-eight, applicant Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, Brian Oler. Location twelve fifteen New Litchfield Street, proposed site plan modification that has seventeen parking spaces. With the following conditions and recommendations, one. The applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, outlined in his November one, twenty twenty-two email to city planner. Two, the applicant shall follow comments of Paul Kunzen, City Engineer, outlined in his October twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-two email to the city planner. Three, the applicant shall follow comments of Ed Towsey, W P C A Administrator, City Engineer. Outlining his November fourth, twenty twenty-two email to the city planner, changes to proposed landscaping and planting shall be shown on the final. Plans, zoning permits are, uh number four, zoning permits are required prior to the alteration. Or use of the site for the proposed use, five, in accordance with sections. Eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner, A, two paper copies of the approved plan, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P. Of zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear the chairman's signature box, copy of the approval letter from the commission, and engineer's seal. And live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman. And prior to the approval of this zoning permits to begin construction.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Number seven, B, special exception twenty-two dash zero eight, and site plan fourteen twenty-five, F, and Allen Realty Inc. Location eight sixty-one, New York, proposal, sales of gasoline, new canopy, parking, landscaping, site work. Signage, uh we need to set a public hearing date, the suggested date, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor? So, moving on to agenda item number seven, C, special exception twenty-two dash zero nine, and site plan. Fourteen thirty, applicant Leila Campo, location two thirty-two, Club Hill Road. Proposal recreational vehicle, R V park for ninety-two sites and associated amenities. Section one point nine zero, home park and recreational vehicle park, we need to set a public hearing date, the suggested date. December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor? Eight correspondence, A, zoning complaint violation update.
Yeah, so you got the man right in the room there to ask.
Moving out to agenda item number eight, B, reemployment of Architectural Review Committee members.
Um yeah, we just, uh we had every single member except our staff, uh Paul and I come up this year, uh we. Uh our uh. Our regulation, where where we established the committee, had, we're supposed to have these these members on staggered terms. So I'm I'm gonna read off sort of a list of of reappointments here to try to get everybody staggered again, uh. I think we have the ability to do that since we make the appointments and not city councils, so I. So I'm just gonna rattle these off here. One member to expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, that'd be Alan Diulio. One, uh two members to expire, uh twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, that's Paul Kunzen's, Jeremy Leifert. And two members to expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, that would be Mark Travella and Robert Maletti. And then one alternate member to expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, John Sullivan. Uh what that leaves us also with is one vacancy, um Jim, Jim Babinski did not re-up. So we need a new. Member from the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the other alternate vacancy. Um as our. As our planning and zoning member. On Architecture Review.
When, when do they meet?
As as needed, and they're always Thursday at five o'clock. So it's just when applications come up when we need a review, we just went like five months without a meeting, but then had meetings like two months in a row.
Sure, I'll volunteer.
Alright, that's a, that's an alternate vacancy, so. Alright, and that one expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. So all those I just rambled off, I have them all written down, but.
So that's. That's the architectural review, uh moving on to agenda item number eight, C.
Sorry, sorry Greg, we gotta take a motion for all that stuff.
I'll move your list and dates.
Okay.
All those in favor? Moving out to the agenda item number eight, C, reappointment of Planning and Zoning Commission members.
Uh that, I just wanted to discuss the people that are up this year, one of them is Greg, Greg Neely, up is up this year. You guys aren't gonna let him go, right? Alright, um and the other one's Tom Tellman, but I'll I'll contact him. I guess by email or something since he he didn't make it tonight. Don't tell him he's in.
Don't tip him off.
No, you don't, don't need a motion, I just wanted to have it up for discussion to make sure, well, you know, people were still, you know, wanted to stay on. What do they want it to or not, right?
Alright, we're good? Alright, moving on to agenda item number eight, D, discussion Torrenton Affordable Housing Plan for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, we, so I went back to to kind of see what we needed to act on first, sort of on our on our list of. Of uh action items that P and Z was responsible for. Um and I think a good first one uh that was recommended is to update our plan of conservation and development. To uh to refer back to that plan, that's, that'll require us to to open a public, you know, open, open the plan back up. For uh for a public hearing, just to add the references to the uh to the Affordable Housing Plan. Obviously, our December's filling up a little bit, so we, I guess we could probably just uh. Just play it by ear and see if, see if January's not gonna be too busy of a meeting, uh January or February. Um we can, we can add that on for a public hearing. We don't, we don't have to take a motion on that yet, just to. No, it shouldn't take, it's, we just have to open it for for a hearing, we gotta post it and.
Why don't we go ahead and just make it, you know, like January, January, let's make it January.
Yeah, for January, oh, you want it, you want to make a motion now to do it for January? Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine, too, I I do need, yeah, actually, that works fine, cause I. I I'll have to look, but I'm pretty sure we need to do notices to the the thirty-five day notice to the Council of Governments on this. So January would would be it anyway. If we were gonna make a motion today, January would be the earliest, we could do it anyway, the January meeting. I, we we don't know what date that is yet, those, but we could just say.
For our next meeting in December twenty-first, we'll, we'll provide a.
We'll have our calendar ready by the, by the time we, our next meeting rolls around too, so we'll know when our twenty twenty-three meetings are.
Moving out to agenda item number nine, the German, time is ten oh five.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everyone, take care.
Good night, thank you.